Get back.
None more, yeah.
Okay, I'll put a little note out to the public on the packet page that we're just recording and posting later, okay?
Okay, thank you. I want the other one, but... The one that says cancel retreat.
Oh, unlocked.
Okay.
Sorry. Where's my spot?
Michelle, there is a chair over here if you'd like to join over here. For Bill, nice comfy couch, comfy chair if you'd like to join over here.
I'll live around some.
Okay.
So, Lyle was able to see this.
Yeah, he can see us. Right, Lyle, you can see us?
Uh, no, right now I just see the circles with everybody's name.
Okay, so, okay, hold please.
I'm okay if it gives better audio and bandwidth. Okay, yep, I see the screen now in the PowerPoint.
Perfect. All right, now we're in late lunch.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so you can hear us, okay, Lyle?
Very clearly. Would it help if I turned my camera off?
Am I, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. We have a lot to get through today based on topics of interest that you've expressed. The staff wanted to make sure we touched base with you on, and so we thought this morning, while you're nice and fresh, we'd work through the more meaty stuff around the local option tax before the lunch break. And then afterwards, we will talk about the priority setting, big picture there to come. And Erin has her draft of your annual report ready to share with you type of things. The Jazz Department has to come in for as much of the meeting as they can specifically for the law discussion. So if you have specific questions for any of them, of course, please ask them. So then the first part here, Betsy Jo wanted to touch on a couple of things from the governance manual with you. And then we will get to the LOT discussions. Since we're starting a little late, we'll try to make up time. And does anyone have questions or any thoughts of what you are hoping to talk about today that I haven't done? Hopefully, we captured everything in this agenda. Okay, good, all right, so Betsy Jo.
All right, so we're gonna just start with agendas. So I just wanted to make sure that the council is all in agreement with how we are studying the agenda. The use of the upcoming meeting schedule, do y'all like that? Seem to be working for everybody. And then, you know, I try to make sure that that's always a three-month lookout. We have been working with staff about trying to minimize those meetings at three hours. And so you'll see y'all put the meeting as closed so that they know, everybody knows not to add anything additional to those meetings once they, the estimated times are at three hours. What we can't predict is how many public comment we're gonna have during a public hearing because, you know, we certainly didn't estimate two and a half hours for public comment at our last public hearing. So sometimes those are the unknowns.
So I was wondering if we could add a step. I'm super glad that that can happen. It might be like, I don't know how far out it would have to be, probably a week or more, something like that. Where you have either a council president or Eric sit down with you and go, wow, we got three hearings. Is Steph sure that we get through all that? I mean, I probably would have asked that question.
I think this is a good question for Michelle that might help. So Michelle, when things are coming out of P and Z and coming forward to the council for the public hearing, do we have much flexibility on timing, on how we schedule those? Or a way that, I'm just curious of the deadlines of when they have to get to council and if there's some flexibility.
There's some requirements within, well, within the code, it says 75 days. We have to schedule it, no recommendation. But obviously, you guys meet every two weeks. We generally have a pretty good sense of things that are gonna be controversial or not. In case of the Maria, for example, that actually didn't have a lot of public comment at the zoning. So that can maybe move to ahead at plan or at city council. So that was a little unexpected. I mean, I think we can monitor though. You know, Betsy Jo and my staff, we're all getting those public comments in advance. So we can kind of start seeing things that people are doing campaigns to get public comment essentially, and then starting to ramp up. So we can account for that. I mean, I know one of the things that the planning and zoning commission does is they actually, if I lost at a time at which they have to consciously make a choice, are we gonna continue on? Or are we gonna continue to decide on this to a date certain, which might be the next night, next week? But they do that just so the technical base that the meetings don't get really late. Because the planning and zoning, obviously, they're doing multiple during the meeting. And, you know, it wasn't uncommon in the past for it to be late for multiple nights because we were so busy. But I think the reality is nobody makes a good decision after so many hours. And I think we've kind of moved more to that model. Obviously, that involves a lot of pressure to move forward and keep moving forward. But we've got the change, so hopefully we do that with regular to taking the road it may be.
Well, that was one of the topics that came up down in Boise. I talked to a lot of mayors and city managers about that and what their experience was, and they all agreed shouldn't be meet until midnight.
No.
So I'm really glad that you agree with that.
No.
Despite what planning and zoning might be doing.
And staff's not sure either. We've already worked to meet our day, you know, and then that's on top of it. So we kind of started losing it.
Yeah.
Well, maybe what you might consider is if the public hearing itself, like, exceeds that hour, you can then make a decision at that time to continue the public hearing to the following meeting. So you can kind of wrap up where you're at at that point, and then you can be able to forward that to the next meeting. The problem is, is that like right now, we have public hearing, public hearing, public hearing in every meeting. So I don't know if you want to, you know, consider, I know we added those first of the month meetings to try to mitigate those as well, but they seem to be filling up with other things too. So, but those meetings are usually only an hour, maybe two hours. So maybe just use that first of the month meeting to, or you can even continue it to your work session time.
So for instance, at the last long meeting going into it, we saw that there was some public comments. But we have been able to amend the agenda that evening before we started to say, take stuff off, like to move.
No, you would have to make, you would have to make a motion to table those items.
So like, would we be able to like bump those up to in front of, like, the front of the meeting to go through and table?
Well, and that's something that we wanna talk about too, is the order of your agenda, you know. The order of the agenda that we have currently has been set by you guys. You want the hard stuff up front and then... So the, sometimes the trouble is with the stuff on the business agenda, if you push those out to the next meeting, sometimes those are time-sensitive.
Right.
So that, that creates its own issue. So you could always, like Michelle said, you could continue to the next night so that it just keeps it flowing pretty quickly because then it's, you know, or to the Monday, if you guys don't want to meet on a Friday or, you know, you could table it to your Friday meeting and maybe have a little longer during the day. So you have a lot of options of what you can do to table any of those items to another meeting or another day.
Yeah, and there's some art involved in that because you're right, technically, you can say, well, we're cutting it off now. People that are on the screen don't get to testify. They're not gonna be real happy about that. So you really, you know, have to be careful on those processes. And I think we've been really sensitive and we've held and done our best. But that was just an example of a meeting where I don't think it went really well, like going out.
Yeah, I mean, so if you were to use a verbal model, like planning and zoning, you know, once you've got done with the arena, because of the back of the meeting said, okay, it's nine o'clock. Are we ready to start this public hearing or do we mind continuing that to a date certain? You know, I know people are hanging on the line pretty bad as well. But I always caution our decision makers not to feel rushed when they make these decisions. They're decisions that last for a very long time. So take the time, consider all that and sit with that information, don't feel rushed. You know, give the public an opportunity to comment and have time to digest that. So if you need to continue, you definitely can. And I think we can, I mean, I knew that was gonna be a long meeting once I saw those public comments coming in. And I was actually impressed at you guys just went for it. Because I kind of thought maybe you were gonna say, like, I'm not sure about this, we're gonna start a whole public hearing. But that was a really long meeting to sit and dust up.
Yeah.
And then that gets hard, right?
Well, continue to work. It just sounds like our process allows a lot of flexibility and we're always more follow it, so.
And we can always look at the upcoming meeting schedules so you can see what your next meeting is looking like. If you want to continue something and, you know, you might all come prepared with, oh, you know, Tuesday night works for me. Let's continue it to Tuesday night or whatever works with the meetings that are up and coming.
Maybe if some of the business agenda things are time-sensitive, could you mark them maybe on the agenda somehow? Like a star or something, you know, just so that way if we say like, hey, it's getting late, let's table some of these things. We know which ones to target.
I can do those, like, on the timed agenda that you guys get. I could make notes on there if you'd like.
Awesome.
Well, I tried to put times on there that are, we all guesstimate those times.
Just like, you know, that it's time-sensitive.
Like a clock.
Oh, a little, a little clock.
Like, we need to deal with that meeting, yeah.
I think too, that if we could all collectively support Bob, if we're all a team on the subject of, for instance, and this is like the stuff that gets frustrating to me, is like, when the time's up, the time's up. So you're a nice guy, Bob, and you're doing a great job running the meetings. But I think if we all collectively are, the minute you let one person say, oh, you can have one more sentence, you're gonna need to wrap it up. If you add up the amount of time of each of the 20 next people that get to wrap it up for another minute, another minute, and another minute, it's just going too far, especially when we've already received the written comments that they're just reading.
I think that we could, you could even, at the beginning, you can say, you know, if you, if you're here to make a verbal comment, remember, and you also made a written comment, please keep in mind that the council has read your written comments. So please keep your verbal comment to either additional testimony or limited.
It's trying to just tighten it up and that we're all trying to support being efficient and not making it all lie on Bob. But at the same time, it is, that is your job.
It is, but yeah.
But I don't think that meeting went.
And waiting for people on the electronic, when people are online and they're waiting and it's like, we're waiting. Now we're sitting there for minutes while we're waiting, like, can you connect? And it's like, move on, next one. They're not there.
I don't think that meeting went that horribly though. I mean, you, you know, I mean, there's, there's a question of, you know, if you see that many comments and it's, I don't know when that agenda item was supposed to be done. But I mean, you could, if you want to keep the time, I mean, we started, I remember that here, that public hearing on the, you know, we started half an hour before it was listed on the time agenda. And, you know, so, you know, you could just say like, okay, we're gonna cut off public comments now. We're gonna keep the public hearing open till the next, whatever, meeting the next day or whatever. Or like you did, I mean, I, you know, I liked in some ways the fact that we got through all the public comments and then we stopped it and were, you know, continuing it or tabling it, whatever we did to, for the deliberations. Because that gave us all the information and, you know, and, you know, like Michelle was saying, we have time to digest that and everything. Whereas if we hear more comments, then it's like some of them might be new, you know, or provide new information or that we didn't hear from the previous commenter. So, you know, it's kind of that balance. I mean, I do like to hear all the public comments and then take that and deliberate for the next time if it gets too late, especially on a project like this. I mean, some stuff, there's not that much to, you know, think about. But, yeah, I guess, I guess, yeah, it's kind of case-by-case basis, right?
We just, yeah.
See what's going on.
You should, I want you to know that you've got our support.
Yeah.
We have mine, and we all work as a team to try to be efficient. We want people to be heard. We want that process, but we also need to be really efficient about it. And you need to know that we've got your back when it comes to that. And it's no disrespect to somebody who wants to talk, but everybody gets a fair shake, three minutes.
And probably going with the people first that are in the room is probably better because, I mean, I know it's disappointing for someone to be online and then be like, oh, I have to hook in tomorrow or whatever in the next week. But, I mean, you're just sitting there at home with a computer, so compared to people actually physically showed up.
Lyle, did you have any comments?
I like the whole nature of that conversation, and I think people who wait online and might not get their turn to speak did get to hear a lot, and they could perhaps call that a plus. And maybe somebody even represented their views. So I would be sensitive to the people online getting cut off. But on the other hand, I think they probably understand and may have already benefited. Thank you.
Yeah, and I didn't mean cut off like they wouldn't get their opportunity to provide a public comment. We need to let them do that for them to, I just mean that they would have to do that at a different meeting.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Everybody wants to wait for them to be efficient and fair and keep them.
I forget, do you guys use a timer? That was an actual bell that was off.
Yeah.
Okay, I was.
And I was mean as I could be.
Going is like people are.
I can just let it keep going and.
Yes, let it keep going so that they're sitting there fighting it.
Yeah.
That, that might be better too, because, you know, I've been at meetings where the county has literally, I mean, someone was online and the three-minute bell rang and they literally disconnected him just immediately.
Yeah.
It pisses people off. And I don't think we want to piss people off. Yeah, we don't have to be rude about it, but more subtly.
Yeah, but you've said it, you've said it upfront, you've told the rules and we need to know, you know. Because the thing is, is like, when we don't want to be rude, but at the same time, it gets rude for somebody to keep talking when the bell goes off.
Yeah, well, they still know it's three minutes. They're adults, they should prepare.
I think it's one thing if it's, you know, someone that's been in front of you many times and participates a lot in what's going on in the community versus someone who's never been there before, you can tell they're super nervous. It's easy to not be able to be able conscious of the time, you know, and they kind of ramble on and, I don't know. I feel like some folks, I don't think they're intentionally trying to go over, they're just nervous. They don't typically come and.
And then they might not even be hearing that thing, right?
They're, because they're just like. I don't.
I think you've gotten a lot better at it, Bob, like, get people to.
Okay, I'll let me, because Mike's points are really good, well, we gotta, we gotta get it, we gotta get him trained. But thank you, because it is hard. We wanna, I mean, I think we want to come across as, we do care about everyone's good. We do. We'd like them to do it in three minutes. Please shut it down, but we don't want to be rude. Because we want to be effective. Yeah, we do want to be effective at all of a sudden. Okay.
So are you guys still liking the way that we're doing comments, giving them through the portals, sending them out? I have been trying to monitor them if we're giving a lot to them more regularly and not just at three o'clock.
You have a really good process. It's really helpful, it's serious.
Okay. Thanks, Lyle. What about your packets? Do you feel like your packets are sufficient? Do you have enough information? Are they timely? Is there anything you want different?
No changes, they're very good and they are timely.
This is your current basic order of your meeting? If you're good with the way that that, again, the work sessions are generally held either on the Friday meetings or the Monday, or the first Thursday meetings. Occasionally, a work session might hit a regular meeting, but we really do our best to not have that happen so that it's just business on those regular meetings.
That's good.
So.
Yeah, we put a lot of thought into this and made some changes and adapted on the way to our monitoring. It's a, it's a good place. We've done a good job of helping to figure that out.
You're good with the order, reports, presentations, public hearing, and then business?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing like that just people were just talking about there, you may have to make a discretion decision on is whether or not we're going to take time-sensitive business items. When you look at an agenda, you know, that involves certain topics, and we kind of know what some of those topics are that are really gonna bring out a lot of robust public hearing, then maybe you would have discretion to put those business items up front that just need to be, you know, it's time.
So before, you want those before the public hearing?
That's the question, is if there's a, if there's a public hearing that could, that we see the comments that, and the number of people walking in the room and everything else, or just the comments up front, and we know that it's a sensitive subject, does it make sense is my question. They don't say, well, we've got something for, that needs to be signed off on a engineering report for the airport that is time-sensitive this week or a grant from, that has to go in by Friday. Do we put those ahead? Is that, I mean, just if they're time-sensitive, if we're gonna get pushed out and we end up, is that, do we need to do that?
Well, we could, I mean, procedurally, we could do that at the meeting, but if you were gonna do it on the agenda, you'd have to do it. Would you put out the agenda?
Does it matter the order, I guess, is my question. When you put the agenda out, does it matter the order? Do we have to stick to the order?
No, you can, as long as you don't change the content of the agenda, you can say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna change the order and do these first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like when you, when you approve the agenda, you can say, okay, we're gonna approve the agenda, but we're gonna change the order at the beginning of the meeting.
And then you can table stuff later if we, if we see that we have to.
Or if we see someone's like, there's an appointment to a committee at the last agenda item, end of a long meeting.
Well, that was the other thing. Somebody had asked, can we put appointments on the consent agenda? So that there's been back and forth, some councils have liked that, some haven't, some feel like it needs to be on the business agenda, some don't, so.
I'm putting it on the consent agenda because we can always pull it off if we see that there's someone in there wanting to be appointed though.
I'd like to make a comment about that. It's usually very quick. And I think just the acknowledgement of the individual and that we respect their contributions to the committee and the importance of the committees and all that's done quite quickly, but I think it's very significant. And I'm just wondering if that opportunity to congratulate people and thank them gets dismissed in the consent agenda. Thanks.
Good point, Lyle.
Well, maybe appointments can be right after, or moved up, moved up after presentations.
I mean, it's hard to have a universal meeting schedule or like order of operations that's gonna work at every, for every occasion.
True. What if we leave it to you to try to make those decisions? Because you've been around long enough, you know what's gonna be lengthy, controversial, and what's time-sensitive.
Well, I used to put quick items at the front and then save the meaty stuff for the end. But then the council said, oh, wait, we want the meaty stuff at the front.
Yeah.
And the quick stuff at the end. So.
Yes.
Now we've worked a year now with, and now we've worked a year with the meaty stuff up front. So do we want to kind of?
The time-sensitive stuff, whether it's meaty or not, maybe that's what needs to move up. And then.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, if it's meaty and it gets too late and it's not time-sensitive.
We're really creating a flow chart for you here. Time-sensitive and quick up front.
Time-sensitive and meaty.
I mean, there's certain presentations that, you know, are preparing you for going to sleep later, then those ones could be later too, but.
Well, that's what I was wondering, do we want to do presentations after public hearings? Because usually presentations, they may not be time-sensitive, but they're probably like, we have a, yeah, an expert or somebody that has, that's giving their time to do this presentation. So then there's that balancing.
Presentations and public hearings.
Oh, okay, so we'll try to make sure we don't do those at the same, okay?
That's what we should be thinking about, because the presentations are not time-sensitive, right?
But you don't want to table them and have the person come back.
But you don't have them not on the same.
Not on the same meeting.
Yeah.
We've got.
Meeting of the month, try to have the public hearings, the second meeting of the month, it's presentation.
Yeah.
You know, that way bring it up.
The only challenge with that is like if you push all the public hearings, you're gonna be last meeting scenario.
Or put the presentations on the Friday work session.
Yeah.
Or the first meeting of the month, put some of the, put a public hearing or the first Thursday.
Originally, that first Thursday of the month was for the, to accommodate the big public hearings. And we haven't been great about doing that. So we'd rather just have a night that's a big public hearing and no other action items. But it's the other way to do it, to free up the regular meeting.
It's just a thing.
It's hard to know.
It's really hard to know, yeah. But I think that.
Involve the lake, deer.
Well, and not having presentations on the same night as a public hearing is easy to manage. I think that's, that's easy to.
See, that's the thing, you would have thought the skis with the roof, we would have gotten a bunch of comments or people show up and, you know, and it's all just online comments.
But I was almost like today because I was held up by somebody that pulled in front of my car as I was leaving my place to talk about that.
Oh, yeah, and by the skis, a colleague of mine that works down in Boise had mentioned that. She was like, oh, so what happened with the skis? And she's like, oh, it's been the top down here.
Well, it happens, it's something.
Yeah.
They were like, the media are feeding that up.
Yeah. We wanted the public hearings up front because we wanted to be able to have all the people that show up, not have to sit through the whole meeting.
Right.
And give people the opportunity to participate and not have to also like wait until they're watching. They're watching it online or till, or to to be coming and going, that's what the intent I thought was that we talked about was try to.
That's right.
Give people that upfront, so we don't want to take that away.
Nope. Well, what we could do is, um, instead of me huddling with Bestie Joe during break, and we did figure it out with her. Best Joe did a great job of guiding me on that, a better way would be, oh, the meeting room's flooded. We have the flexibility to have, and I know, but there's three time sensitive contracts or something like that, or appointments. Um, that we need to get done, I could ask, hey, before we approve the agenda, I think we're going to go along tonight. Um, this public here, we've got thirty people signed up to speak, or the room is packed. How about we take fifteen minutes and get these things pumped out first? And then we could, you know, ask.
We can do that discretionary at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
Then let's just do that.
I think that's.
That's a good one, that we can choose together.
Yeah, and we will, I think, have a good sense that the meeting would potentially go along if we might be like that. Despite all your best efforts to schedule everything.
Yeah, you can't, you can't take all the responsibility.
Yeah, well, and I think we can, you know, as staff too, you know, working with Michelle and Brian, just to make sure that, um, we're thoughtful about where those public hearings are going and that. You know, utilizing that first Thursday of the month and i- in a better way with the public hearings and such.
It's just the constant, we're always trying to be efficient, trying to be effective, like you were very, very good last night in the meeting on the ADA update. We've had some ADA updates that have been two hours long, it feels like, and so it's like. Well, we have a lot of other things going on and it's like, okay, we're trying to be efficient, we're trying to give everybody. But like you were very efficient last night and we've all read, we all read the packet.
Right, we have it.
We all read the comments, all of us read the packet, it's, it's clear in the meetings that everybody's done their homework, so. So how much time we have somebody re-go over. Everything in the presentation is, that's where we just need to coach, and you probably do a ton of that.
Yeah, yeah, try to stick to the highlights, because, you know, you get airtime, the public wants to hear that, you know, so you just hit some highlights and. Move on and.
Yeah.
Not read a five-page report to you.
I think not only is Bestie Joe doing it, I think our staff, our coachee speakers, they get to do that, it's really helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, because somebody who makes a presentation who's going to just, just try to like. Feed it into submission is, it's, they're not going to get what they want.
No.
So being to the point and clear is. So we're giving everybody respect, I guess that was something early on when I was, first was on council, it's like there are certain people that. Are acting as though their subject is the only thing on the agenda, and there's ten other items.
It is to them.
Yeah, yeah, well, and like last night, we had the luxury, so to speak, to let people, like, you know, the chamber maybe have a few extra minutes. Because there, it was a very.
Some very heavy meetings.
Yeah, it was very light meeting, so it kind of gave you that flexibility to be able to allow a additional.
If we're asking questions.
Yeah.
Then, then they go over, that's, you know, I mean, that's to our benefit, we have the question, so.
And that was a good meeting last night, you did a good job, Bobby.
Oh, thanks.
All right, well, as we move on, um, the next part of this is just government basics, so this, um, is just. An effort to just give you a refresher, we'll just kind of click through these pretty quickly, um. As we go along, if you have any questions or you want to discuss it, how you guys work together, um, especially as far as the governance manual goes, um. As we go through, I have referenced the governance manual by page number, which is also in your packet, um, so. So that's, that's the point of the next section of this, okay? So just a reminder that, um, this council is that all five of you are. Um, equals, you're all five voting members and that you all, your power lies within your unity. Um, you don't have any power as an individual other than to listen to your constituents and then to bring that information back to the whole. So that's really, um, where your power as a council member is, okay?
Good job on that.
Thanks.
A lot of people seem to not get this. I'm not saying a lot of people in this room, I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, in general, so a role of the mayor, which we just, um, reviewed this when I selected your mayor, um. You know, uh, as you know, he, the mayor has no power other than to be a good advocate for our city. And, um, I think that Bob does a great job of that, um, so that's the basics of what the mayor does.
Any weddings to be efficient? I think about ten, really, ten or twelve, and we always turn the donation over to the library, it's kind of fun, so, but yeah, done about ten, twelve.
Yeah, he has a little, we found a, like a little, um. Ceremony online and kind of, we send it out to the people ahead of time and say, okay, this is what we have, adjust it as you want it, and then. Yeah, kind of fun.
Pretty simple and fun.
The role of city council, so your role, um. Your big one is that you're accountable to your citizens, right, to your voting public, so the people that live within the city limits, that is your voting public. You get lots of comments and, and rightfully you, you listen to them that aren't from your voting public. Um, but at the end of the day, your accountability is to your voting public, um. So does anybody have any questions about the role of city council?
I think that's a great comment, highlighted that that is one of the reasons. It feels like generally speaking. That's for our decision-making does occur.
Yeah.
Does need to be about the people that live and work here and go. Foremost, without that, all those tourists have nobody, there's not, there is, there's, there's no core to anything. It all falls apart if we don't take care of the people that live here.
And remember.
Same page on that, right? I mean, they're what you just, they, they were, we're thinking about the citizens, we call the voting public, but we call first, or?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's, you just kind of understand the layers of it, now there's. City, city first, then there's the impact area, then there's the county.
Second.
Yeah, then the kind of like, it's the onion, you know, gets further and further out of like. You know, the city put, like, how does it affect, how does something affect maybe more than just in the city limits?
Yeah, I think that's just recognizing that you have a lot of stakeholders.
Mm hmm.
They may not be, you know, residents or voters, but, um, you do have a lot of stakeholders, so staff. Fling with all this stuff, we do try to consider that and what, um, influence or what impacts that's going to have, and. Obviously don't operate in a vacuum. So there are a lot of considerations related to stakeholders, even if. I mean, but ultimately, it's the voters that hold you accountable, right, not the stakeholders, but they certainly are.
I think when you're saying that, thinking of like, you know, the whole, the whole tourism. Get people saying, oh, the tourists aren't going to like this, they're not going to come, they're going to do this, they're going to do that, like with short-term rents, instance, but then, you know. We need to consider for our city, it's like, well, tourism is, is an important part of our economy, but at the same time, you know, we can't let it run. Free and wild and because that's not working for our community, but, you know, so there's that balance of like, okay, doing what we want for our community at the same time. You know, not, not destroying what, uh, or i- is a part of our community, but, you know, making it work for us. Yeah, I wanted to add to that, it seems like a good time to interject. Um, I'm actually pivoting a little bit in Communications Office this year, because we find ourselves in a situation where we have a question. It's going to be, you know, targeting specifically our residents, voters, um, and then we find that when we get a lot of feedback, because these new things, social media. And different things like that, right, it really does invite conversation from everyone even outside your public, um, that you serve. So we're going to try doing this here with your blessing, of course, today, be to, number one, whenever we do any sort of survey or ask of the public. Be really clear that they answer a few questions, do you reside within the city limits, do you work within the city limits, are you a new area or a second homeowner? Do you visit often, you know, just kind of really engaging with what kind of stakeholder are getting information from? And then, um, our office will do our best to separate out those comments for you so that you can really weigh them and appropriate to the conversation. To make sure that if this is a situation that has to do with, say, a church in the middle of town, for example, that you're really thinking about just your residence within the city. Right, limits, and you're not carrying those places from outside, um, the other thing that we're going to be doing is targeting our messaging a little bit more, not everything is socially worthy. Right, some things are, need to be targeted directly through a water bill, through a direct email to our residents, not to everyone on the mailing list. So we're just going to try to be a little bit more thoughtful to that, um, this year, at least that's where I'm spending my strategy this year, to see if we can. Trim down the noise, because we're pretty popular out there in the world and people love to weigh in, even all the way from Iowa or, you know, Georgia, they like to tell us what they think, so. If you guys think that's a good plan, um, I think that's the way I'd like to move forward this year. Happy to listen to any thoughts or concerns.
Yeah, so we can talk about that more in the afternoon.
The other, the other part, um, as the role of council is remember that, um. You are held to the current laws and ordinances and policies that have been adopted before you. And if you, um, are not happy with those ordinances, policies and such. You have the power as a collective to change that, and so if any one of you feel like there's an ordinance or a policy. Um, that you're not, no longer comfortable with, or you would like to see it change, then you would bring it up during the upcoming meeting schedule and say. Hey, you know, I really am struggling with personnel policy manual, and I really think that we need to change A, B, and C. And so then you drug step to bring that up at the next meeting or at a future meeting, and then we try to. Accommodate the ideas that you have, and then it gives you an opportunity to deliberate about that, discuss that, and so whether it's a policy and ordinance. Whatever it might be, so you have, that is part of your role is to be able to review those kinds of things. Um, those policies are all available to you, um, the ordinances, of course, are all available to you. Um, if there's something that you just don't feel like is working for our city any longer, it's something that you can. Bring up as a group to see if that that is direction that you want to give staff. Okay, any questions about that? Hey, so I just stuck these in there just to, as a reminder of what an ordinance is, um, that ordinance sets law. And a resolution sets policy or fees. Okay? And usually the policy is how the structure of this, you know, um. Planning or. Hey, governance manual, uh, just talks about what your purpose is, um, and. And the rules by council, so again, this was, um, a document that has been, uh. Massaged over the years and has changed as council changes and sees different priorities within the document, so again, um. That is something that this body has the opportunity to affect change with. Um. On page one, it talks about the functioning of the city council, um. Again, this talks about, um, the importance of you as leaders within our community. Um, working in tandem with the city manager and the city officers, um, and department heads, um, as well as other city leaders within our community. So it's important that we all work together for our community. And then just goes on the, again, to advocate for the city. And talks again about you being able to sponsor an ordinance or a resolution to change. And then the role of the city manager, and I'm sure you guys will talk about this probably even a little bit more later when you, um, looking forward and. Uh, at the recruitment process, it's good to have in your mind the role of the city manager, um. That is. The base of that, anybody have any questions or comments about the role of the city manager? And this is, uh, how it's covered in the governance manual under city administration. The role of city.
Back up really quickly, that last bullet, I mean, obviously I don't introduce every single agenda item, we just go straight to the staff or the person, you know, but I don't. Problem, unless you really want the city manager to introduce everything, okay?
It's just something that is in the current governance manual, so if that's something that you want to modify, we serve.
Okay, great.
Finishes it.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I heard that comment, but I may be reinforcing it, I think currently, Annette, the city manager, um, voices the recommendations, suggestions. Uh, and, and sometimes, uh, personal insight very appropriately, and it's, it's, uh, it contributes a lot. To getting the best outcome for the council, I think I would say the same thing when we get to legal counsel, at those times they, uh, offer their advice, it's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, these are your appointed officers, um. The clerk, the treasurer, the attorney, and the chief of police, and they are the four that can fill in for the city manager, um. If in the absence of the manager. Any questions, comments, concerns? This, the law does allow that, um, the city council can, uh, name other appointed officers of the city, that's. How the chief became an appointed officer, um, but it is your discretion, uh, to name any department heads as an officer.
So I think I reach this as, since I want to have a vacation or sick or whatever, but not necessarily the vacant position.
Right.
Um, we can talk about that later today.
Because we may be talking about having an interim city manager.
Yeah.
All right. Role of staff, um, I think it's really important to iterate that. City staff works for the council, and the way that we work for the council is through the ordinances and policies that the council has adopted, so our work is. Is designed by what city ordinances and policies are, so city staff doesn't make decisions in a vacuum. They don't, their decisions are not made because of their own opinion or their own desire. Their decisions are made because of adopted policies that the council has adopted, adopted ordinances that the council has adopted, it's our job to enforce those things. And so, um, so I think it's important for the council as well as the public to understand that. Staff is directed by the council through their adopted ordinances and policies, it's not. We, staff does not make those decisions themselves.
But they influence those policies, ordinances, be created.
Well, I think that if a council member wants, um, an ordinance or they have. Well, I think that if a council member wants an ordinance or they have had direction around like the short term rental ordinance or the local option tax ordinance, when those would get developed, staff tries to interject what they hear from you. So that's the influence that they have is from the direction that they hear from a five member council. So sometimes it might feel like that staff is influencing that, but really it's staff trying to interpret what five different people are giving them instruction to do.
I think to Colby's point, when they're being created or codes are being changed, obviously you've hired us to give you our professional opinion, which would influence the council to some degree, right? So I mean, that definitely happens, of course, because we practice in the field and have the training and the expertise from our respective positions to offer that. But ultimately, it's the council's decision what you want to do on any particular code amendment or new code or whatever. But we certainly, I expect the staff to provide their objective professional advice to the PNC, to you, to, you know, when you're designing these things, to do the research, look at the comparable cities, look at whatever, you know, to give you the best information possible. And then ultimately, you're making the decision together on what to implement or not. But I think that is true. We do influence that, but not in a way that's, it would be unethical for us to do it in a way that didn't benefit the city or the community as a whole. Like we have ethical standards. We have to abide by through all of our different licenses and things.
Oh, I was just going to add, and me just to kind of tie it back to, meaning it all kind of starts with our comprehensive plan. That's what the vision is, that's the mission is, it sets goals, it aligns needs. And then, you know, relates to ordinances, those are, those are the tools that actually enact that comp plan. The comp plan is a great component. And that's kind of what we go back to is sort of like a guide, policy decisions, ordinances, things like that. Then obviously specific ordinances that are brought to planning and zoning, city council insurance for adoption. And then our job is, as staff is to try to implement those consistently fairly across the board. Obviously, there's, you know, some administration interpretation, but we have an appeal process, which if people don't agree with the way that we're doing things. But again, our goal is to provide consistent service and be fair, you know, to everybody. You know, there might be times where it seems like we're advocating one way or the other, but usually that's because it goes back to one of those policies. I mean, that's called advocacy planning. And so you might have a special interest showing up that you need that maybe part of everything that the community or what we've heard, you know, in the past. So there, we happen to have, you know, usually the people who show up are either self-interested or they're special interests. The general public doesn't just show up to all your meetings and weigh in on everything. Sometimes that staff we have to carry forward. This is what we heard for this bigger broader public process. And that's why we're trying to represent that voice that we need as well. So, but by and large, what we try to do is present those values of everything. And then also know when people are presenting to you, they might be presenting misinformation, you know, that can be a little challenging for us to, to reply. We try to provide like the input at the meetings, but I can't tell you how many times I've heard people type what they're trying to say. Hey, I mean, here's a good example. We're going to provide, we're going to, but there's no specific tools, right? And then you say, oh, and we're like, okay, well, you know, that's not really good for all of these. That's just an example of sometimes people like to tell you what they think is not here, but it may not be accurate. So our job is to try to make sure we bring specifically in current planning, projects that, you know, we try to bring you the issue that actually came to that and resolved.
And then if there are places where majority of the council feels like, okay, the application of this code is not working, like these things are not, whatever it is, then this is where later today, you know, there's certain things that through your experience now several years together, you're like, this is an issue. Then we can talk about, okay, what is, if there is something that the council wants to focus on in an upcoming year, because some things, depending on what they are, which part of the code they're in, there's a lengthy process to adjust it. But yeah, so I guess that's sort of the lengthy way to say that these things are organic and they occasionally need to change, right? To reflect what's happening in the community. So what have, what's gone on 20 years may not be relevant now. And the staff's always open minded to that within the capacity of the staff to like do that in addition to everything that's on their plate. But I know that I've heard internally, everybody's always open to the council's guidance on when something has become a big issue and it's current, whatever rules aren't working. So.
And then we tie everything back to our planning documents.
And then as Michelle's told you before, there is a lifespan to the comp plan. And so after many years of trying to implement it, then you do it for you to see if that big picture also needs updating. So.
Anyway, we can move on so that we don't run out of time.
One thing, one thing that we do at the staff level is, I mean, inevitably there's always contradictions that you don't work for every project. So we have a running list of potential critical changes that we keep, or we know things that just aren't working. And so every so often, we'll try to review kind of a whole series of amendments, if they're either cleanup items, or it's like shift in policy, bigger policy ones often require us to do work sessions with you. Also keep in mind that we have the challenge of also making sure everything that you adapt, the county will adapt, which is usually challenging, especially in recent years. So, so we have, we have to be mindful of what things to start digging into specific. We have to make sure that everyone is also on board when we start bringing those changes. And so that may temper, play what we do because we try to work at a regional level and there may be differences of opinion on how to implement specific policies, which you're considering that certainly. So we try to find that balance and then ultimately, right, we get to the comp plan because the city, and that's what we're hoping, you know, at the time. So that's, that's kind of the challenge, just kind of working that too. Sometime, I have to tell you though, at this point, like it's not like things are still in, like when we bring new code amendments, a lot of times it's smaller things. There are major policy shifts. Again, those are things that are better done in the sort of bigger broader planning process because.
This is Lyle. Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Mute or? Lyle, do you hear us now?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I don't have, if there's anything on the screen, I don't have the screen, but I do hear you well.
Yeah, it's coming back. We just lost connection. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you see the PowerPoint now?
Yes, and the audio. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, just, okay. All right, so moving along. Again, the relationship between council, city manager, and SCAP. Again, just keeping that relationship cohesive and, and open is important to be able to carry out the city's policies. The role of the citizen, of course, is to get involved, to be informed, to make a difference, and to vote. So we always want to encourage our citizens in these aspects. And the citizen is, is of course, that lives, is defined as somebody that lives within city limits. Again, there are some definitions about citizens, residents, voters, qualified electors. So. Questions about, yes, Lyle?
Yeah, thanks. I had a question to Annette and department leads. And that is if city council by and large over instigates, you're consuming your time trying to get more information or are we, you're still thinking that there's plenty of time on your agendas and that for us to, I feel like I should seek more information occasionally. I just want to make sure as a council in general, we're not overburdening departments with our individual questions and that.
As far as I know, Lyle, it has not been an issue. And of course, we're available to you guys one-on-one to get your questions answered, provide information. If it is related to something on an upcoming meeting, though, I would want to be looped in because I'd want to make sure that all councilors have the same information about something and not one of you have more than the other. And so that's just a caveat there. But if it's not related to an upcoming agenda item or anything like that, you know, feel free to, to chat. I haven't heard of anybody having any issues with council taking time. That's what we're here for, to help you do a good job. So.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Annette, I would add that many times it's more appropriate to ask questions of staff prior to a meeting than during a public meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it depends if you feel, I mean, there's two ways, I'm sure there's multiple ways. But in my mind, there's a couple of ways to do your question process. One is you just need clarification on what's in the packet or the issue or whatever, because you want to make sure you're clearly understanding and you want to come to us before the meeting. Great. Another technique is you ask the question during the meeting because you may already know the answer, but you think it's an important thing to get into the public realm. And there may be people in the public that might have this question. So you're strategically asking it in the meeting in order to get that information out there because it's not maybe apparent in that written material. So, I mean, just use your best judgment. But we understand that that's all part of making sure that we have the correct and good information out in these resources in the minutes and stuff. So, but no, I haven't had anybody got any issues with people asking questions.
Thanks. I think those are two really good points, that sometimes it's important to ask a question during council meetings so that the public hears the full spectrum of that issue. Thank you.
Okay, and then just your relationship with the council and the public. Citizens are going to hit you up. Just remember, ex parte communication for land use items or any quasi judicial has to be disclosed. And any questions about that? The role of the city attorney.
He's here today.
Here's. Put him on the spot. So he, he provides advice to you, to the council and to staff. He interprets laws and policies. He represents the city in court and is often responsible for drafting ordinances, resolution, and policies. City committee boards and commissions. So I kind of labeled them as the advisors because they, they should be also bringing recommendations to the council regarding their, whatever their committee is. You know, Parks and Rec, if they have something that they want to see happen in the Parks and Rec world, they should be bringing that advocacy to you. Same with the airport, the golf course, all of those. A lot of times, like during their report, they might mention something that they are hoping to accomplish. But it's not uncommon for a committee or a commission to want to meet with you like you're going to do with a local option tax commission, so that you can hear their process or hear something that they want to change or add or whatever to that, whatever that. So that's there. It's like giving you more opportunity to touch base with the, the public because they are a portion of your public that's interested in that particular area of the city. Public meetings are just that. They're public, open to anybody that wants to be there. It's, gives them a forum to be able to talk with the council. I think you guys do a great job of listening to your public. And again, you know, your, your authority comes from acting collectively at a meeting. In your governance manual, it also talks about respect and decorum of how you interact with one another and you act, interact with staff. The governance manual also talks about how the mayor can call, order, can ask for anybody to leave if they're being disruptive, members of the public, as well as staff or another council member. So do we have any questions, comments, concerns about governance within our city? Anything you want to revisit again at a later date? All right. Well, if you guys want to take a quick five minute break, and then we'll get into a collection text.
You.
Let's see, Joe, do you know if other department houses are on the... There.
We're about to get started again. And just everybody hold patient for us just a couple more minutes. Our next item is our local option tax discussion. I do also have Amanda Payne here, who is our local option tax administrator. So she's available for questions as well. I'm sure she'll appreciate that.
When did she come to the city? Does it tend to be there as a while can hear anything? Any questions?
Thank you.
Don't get it.
Thank you. Okay. So first of all, I just want you to know that these are the questions to be thinking about as we move through these slides. So we're not going to answer them right now. But at the end of the presentation, these are the questions that we would like for council to consider. Okay? I put on there what a definition of a tax is, just in case you ever wondered what that meaning is. And then next, we go over the purpose and intent of a local option tax. This gives you the legislative intent. When the legislature adopted the legislation that allows for a resort city to have a local option tax, the intent is to provide additional dollars to alleviate the excess demands for service on a resort city that the funds received from property taxpayers cannot support. This is just a reminder that the state constitution does not allow for cities to raise money for or donate money to any private company. And as we go along, if you guys have any questions or comments, please interject. This one is kind of give you the lot history for the city. Through research, it has been noted that when council back in 2005 agreed to go to the voters for a local option tax, they determined that the tax was a way to alleviate the pressure of the outside demands put on the general fund. The demands were getting greater every year, and the council at the time was having to make choices between staff increases, benefits, staffing levels, and levels of service and funding these outside agencies. So it was intended that these organizations, such as TBT and McPaus and the Chamber and other such organizations that provide services to the community that the city does not provide, but is deemed needed for the health and welfare of its citizens to support, would be funded through the lot instead of the general fund, as well as supporting streets, parks, golf, airport, and the library, giving the general fund the relief it needed to support services for the citizens, such as police and the general administration to retain employees and efficiently run the city. In your packets, there is a chart that looks back to 2005 that shows the amount of lot funds that was used for city projects. And it's after your PowerPoint. It shows that over the 19 years of lot, 55% of the collected lot dollars have been spent to support city services for the citizens of McCall. It also shows that the general fund continued to support outside agencies, such as TBT and McPaus, both of which have been funded through the general fund and the lot for the last 19 years. So that chart kind of shows you those monies that were spent. Were you able to find those? Show you. So it looks like this one? Oh, no, that's the long one. That's the total. But it looks similar to that one. It should have tested that for them. Oh, yeah, this is the one. So it looks like this, and it has the library at the top. And then it shows each year how much funding is for each one of those. And then it gives you the percentage of the total local option tax that was paid to support city services. And then down below, it shows you for TBT, how much they were paid through LOT and through the general fund, and then the same for McPaus, but with that same time period. It just gives you a holistic view of how those dollars are being spent. So you'll find that after the ordinance there that you're looking at. Sorry about that. And then you have the legislative intent.
Saying something about how much was given to different departments. I got the one that's toward here.
Yeah, the different departments. It should be right. Was going to bring it up on my computer, but I didn't. My computer isn't working with the internet. Did you see it? There it is. That's the one. Yep, that's the one. So any questions about any of that information?
And, let's see, Joe, you're just talking about the tourism LOT.
Yes.
Was it the funding sale tax?
Correct.
It's just the 3% for...
Correct. Right.
So it means spending on the streets.
Right, so the streets that are in those numbers are street projects that were funded through the tourism lot and not the streets tax. Does that make sense?
For clarity, the streets tax, again, that's with sales tax.
1% sales and 3% lodging. From the streets.
So then we have an additional 3% for the tourism lodging. So with the bed tax, 3%, and then 3% of the bed tax. So we have a total of 6% of lodging, half of which goes to the what we call the tourism tax and half of which goes to the streets tax.
Because you have two separate ordinances governing this. And in the streets, LOT ordinance, that specifically identifies the one group that has tax plus a 3% lodging tax. But this is only the...
Yeah, so your phone number is 1-449... Thank you.
So I just want to clarify that, that this is just the one.
We're talking 3%.
Yeah, we're just tired of this. Yeah. Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And this one was just renewed by the voters in 2018. So it is like halfway through a little over, halfway through its lifespan at this point.
Yeah.
And then again, the state convention tax is...
2%.
2%. So the hotel, currently the hotel or the vacation rental property pays...
That's... They pay the state 6%, the state 2%, so that's eight. The city, 7%. Because they have...
3% LOT, as we're talking about here, and then there's 3% plus the 1%.
Plus the 1%. So they pay 7%.
And the balance of the sales tax, again, I mean, clarification of anybody that goes back and listens, like balance of the sales taxes related to what goods and services.
Oh, where does it come from?
The 1% sales tax, like, is not on groceries, right?
Correct, it's on food groceries, and it is not on the... On any vehicle sales, so...
Just on, like, everything else?
Everything else, so restaurant food, non-food items in the grocery store, retail, all of those things, yep.
And that's streets.
That all goes to the streets.
Yeah.
So I didn't do any... So most of our focus here today is about the tourism and how we administer that.
That's just... Could refer everybody to...
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, and the lot history was researched through old minutes and that kind of stuff. So that's where all that information came from. Do you have any questions about that? Advance. All right, so currently, there are four items that the council has directed to be funded with the tourism lot annually. Also in your packets is a document with a list of other cities in Idaho with a local option tax and their allowable uses. Please note that only two other cities allow application processes for organizations to apply for lot, like the city of McCall does. And I think there's 21...
Two now.
Yeah, but there's listed in your packet 21 of them. I don't know who the 22nd one is. And one of them, I couldn't find any information about. But the other 20, I found all their information.
But the new one is Bonner's Ferry, and they talked about them. Were they not on there?
They are on that list. So I... Oh, maybe I counted 21 because I didn't count us.
Oh, there you go.
So... So one of the questions that will come up at the end is if you... If the council wishes to continue to prioritize these four items. And then some things to think about in ways to make sure that these items are funded. You may want to consider a... You may want to consider a percentage or a blanket amount that always goes to fund city projects. And services. And would not have to go through the application process. And then the remainder would be given to the organizations that apply that the lot commission can consider those applications. So that's something for you to consider. As we go through this. Any questions or comments about that?
I think what you just led with is something that's important for us to.
So. Just to give you a brief overall of how the lot, the tourism lot budget is set. We look at the document that shows the actual dollars received and the percentage. Change for each year and average the last five years percentage of that increase or decrease to determine a budget. That document is also in your packet. And so we kind of, we look at trend and. And budgeting. You know, the year before your, the funds are even coming in. So there's so much we just don't know. So we have, we only have the data that we have to make those decisions. Some of the things that. That we do also is that. We apply the budget to the priority projects and place the rest of the eligible projects in contingency. So. If the budget is, is a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand worth of projects are on the priority and then. And then all the rest of the projects that are still eligible for funding go into contingency. So if we collect more than what is budgeted, then they would get funding. Sometimes like last year. We didn't. We budgeted way heavy and the reason, in part, the reason was is that we were trending so far, you know, we had. Two or three years that really had huge increases, right? So then that increased the budget. And that way, and then also we. Budgeted in an attempt to not have to. To do a budget amendment if we appropriated more funds. But it created a whole other issue because then. A lot of projects were not being able to be funded, but those, in reality, those wouldn't have been funded. Regardless of how we did that, but there's other ways that we can look at budgeting. We can. Budget more conservative, conservatively in the beginning and then take a look at it in August and say. Oh, my gosh, we're really trending over average and over budget. So maybe now we need to do a budget amendment to appropriate those anticipated additional funds. And then we can fund more of the projects. So that's an idea that we can do. And so that's another thing for you to consider as we go forward.
I think the big thing that came to light this year is just goes back to like managing expectations, right? So Beth and Joe does her best, basically eighteen months ahead of time to figure out, okay, what's a reasonable number? That we should. Have the lot commission work with in terms of what we think might be available for spending. When they're prioritizing these things and of course that. And set an expectation. We say we think we're going to get a million dollars. They go through the process of like all these things that add to a million dollars. And then we get to the reality, which happened this time around, and we didn't get a million dollars, whatever the number is. I'm just throwing out a round number. We only got eight hundred thousand. So the people at the bottom of the priority list did not get. And if the reverse had happened, where we had been very conservative in budgeting and said, we're only going to. Tell the lot commission they have eight hundred thousand to work with. And then they went through their process and they came up with their list. You know, that could have had a different outcome this year if that's really only all we got. Does that make sense?
Well, the couple of this contingencies.
Yeah, or even if there's no guarantee. That all the people are going to get funded even if they're not on contingency. I think that contingency is a little bit misleading.
Yeah.
Because. And again, that's what I'm trying to say is we're getting back to managing expectations of applicants, right? So if they think they're on the list and they're not in contingency, but we don't receive the money, they're still not going to be able to get money under the current. Process. So part of the equation is how much do we estimate ahead of time? In our direction to the lot commission that they think they have to work with when we don't really know yet how much we're getting. Does that make sense? So it's trying to find that sweet spot because one year. We were behind the curve with the pandemic, thinking that. We weren't going to have much lot revenue with everything shut down and everything. So we had a really conservative number. And in reality, we collected way more for a sunlight war. And when that happened, the law, and you'll remember this, the law says you can't keep it because you didn't budget for it.
And we missed the opportunity to do a budget amendment.
And so we had to refund those lot taxes back through the property tax. It's crazy to me, but that's what the law says. So we ended up refunding. That back to people to credit on the property tax bill. So we're like, okay, let's not do that again. So then we were a little more aggressive with the budget estimate for the lot commission. And now we're hitting a softening with those revenues. So. You know, it's like the trend, I guess what I heard yesterday in some of the discussions with the governor. Was things in Idaho are normalizing, you know, like we have this big spike in lots of places. You know, maybe it won't be so. Volatile as it was the last few years, but. It's just something to think about. I mean, that's the first step of the equation. It's like, how much should we really estimate that the lot commission has available? Is it all of it? And trying to avoid that refund situation, or is it a portion of it so that we can? Anyway, these are just good things that kind of like. To avoid the.
And the aspiration. And then the scenario that she gave with the eight hundred thousand and the million. Really, in reality, if we had done only the eight hundred thousand, still the same number of projects would have only been funded. And.
Wouldn't have been an expectation.
Yeah, and the letters are.
They were going to get money, right?
The letters.
That seems to be the key right there is that people need to understand this. LOT funding is not your general operating fund for your business.
Right, and it's.
This is something for a specific project that you're going for. Right? That isn't that.
That is something that, you know, we've tried to educate people about, you know, don't defend, don't depend on these. There's no guarantee. The letters are also in your packet that we send to them are very clear that it is. You know, even though you're in the priority funding. If we don't get the money, you don't get funded. It's wholly based on whether or not that funding comes in and. Amanda does an amazing job of educating people when they call. The letters that she sends out are very clear. You know, hey, you were awarded this. However, if the money doesn't come in, then you're not getting it.
It's more of a, if you say, if you say you look at your, you look at your chart and you see that we're kind of, we've dropped off a little bit from the COVID peaks. And you say, okay, it looks like we probably are on target to have six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars available. So let's just estimate eight hundred thousand, the LOT commission. And maybe we give some direction moving forward again, like prior to twenty eighteen. Or prior to twenty nineteen, where the council gave some direction. Then we give some direction, they send, we say. Budget on eight hundred thousand. That way we don't have money going back. If we cover a budget on eight hundred thousand, then you. Then they, we have the list of, they say city. Things like doing sidewalks and these kinds of things that support the maintenance of the influx of tourism and the effects of whatever. And you've got the amount of the other projects. And there's these contingencies. And everybody's really clear, like if you're lower on the list, you may not get funded. And you're already doing that. So then if that's the case, then we're only talking about people complaining that they didn't get funded because they were counting on it?
That is correct. That is correct.
So the contingency thing might be a good tool to visit, like you were saying that before we conclude this topic. But I'm also interested in, because the governor does, it's a lot having effectively the. Conservative budget, I think was the term. And so if the forecast was, using Mike in the next example, if the forecast was. Eight hundred and we only funded six hundred thousand. We said, we don't want to be in a position. We're wrong. Because. When, when the markets are going down and things are not so rosy and it's not a continued upward trend, it's difficult. So if we budgeted conservatively, however. You define that or advise us to do that. And then you said that there's another option. That's not over the top and that is. Over, in like August, we didn't. So let's say, oh, things corrected and we did get eight hundred. So then Mike was, was trying to be helpful and I think we all want. To have then what's the next list? Is that called a contingency? Or is that just lower priority? I don't know, which is.
I personally feel like that we should do away with contingency and that we just make a priority list. And we fund them until we run out of money and then, and continue to state in their letter that if you are lower on the. List, then you probably are not going to get funded.
If we can bring in more money.
But if we bring in more money, then you could, you know.
Your budget amendment keeps going down.
And we.
I've another mini grant cycle.
Yeah.
You know, renew the.
I didn't know that we wanted to do that because it's already, I mean, the work is already done and they're already prioritized. So. If we're, if we're, if we're saying we're getting eight hundred thousand. Then we would say in the letter and we send out a list of the matrix, right? The, who, you know, the priority order of who's allowed to be, or who's eligible for funding and who's not eligible for funding. And then we could say, okay, well, you know, the budget right now is set at eight hundred thousand. So projects will be funded.
Let's say like one through fifteen.
But still that gives an expectation that they're going to get funded. I think that we need to eliminate that expectation.
You could do, I mean, they know, they know what the estimated budget is.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you just do one list, say this is the priority and.
This is the estimated. Yeah, this is the estimated.
Estimated amount and they can see whether they're like, oh, below that amount or above that amount, but you have it clear in your letter that. You know, it, we may, that's an estimated amount, even if you're within that estimated amount, we don't, we may not get that much and you may not get funded.
I can pull up.
Can I? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all right. The contingent, I mean, I think it's important to add the flexibility. To be able to fund a certain thing potentially partially and have the contingent fund. To, should the funds be available? To fully fund the project or whatever.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So like if something is two hundred thousand, but they want to put one hundred thousand up here, but then put another hundred thousand down here. Well, that could also just be in the priorities, but we could call it contingency too. It's just semantics really, but we could.
Is that what contingency is for now? Like, how do you get on?
Sometimes, sometimes that happens. Sometimes it's just like. Okay, well, we budgeted, we said our budget is a million dollars. We got to a million dollars, but all of these projects are still eligible for funding. So let's throw them, throw them into contingency.
The thing with, the thing with the contingent and the partial funding. I know this because of experience with it on the professional level is that when budgeting. Because we deal with budgets and having to go eighteen months out because we're not seeing that money for a year. To be able to have an idea if. If we know a project is likely not to be fully funded because it's clear that a portion of it is on contingent. Then that allows any organization to plan accordingly for that. The other thing that might be nice on that list too is just, yeah, that draw the line on the list. Here's our budget line. If you're. Close to this line or below it, let's.
I mean, it's hard to draw the line because we had ten projects all above the line. That did not get funded.
Yeah.
And so it, because the, you know, because we budgeted. We were.
More.
Aggressive in the budgeting process, right? Because we were trending that way, right? And then just like back in two thousand and six, it just went, you know, south, but not as bad, but. I mean, we're still collecting a million dollars, but it's just. Again, I don't think it matters. How the list is because there's going to be some amount of expectation. From people just because of the way their mind works. They're like, oh, I'm, I'm up on the top, so I'm going to get funded. And the, you know, and again, the committee uses their. Their commission guidance that was adopted by the council. For them to set their priorities. So that's how they're set by priority is the higher the score, the higher the priority. And so that's how those priority fundings are determined.
It was like partial funding determined because, I mean, Colby, it seems what you're saying from your experience. I mean, there may be projects where if you don't get full funding, you're not going to do.
Because the.
So is there any sense from the organization like, hey, if you don't fund this fully, we're not, we don't want.
Yes, they ask, typically the commission will ask the applicant during the, during the. Review of the applications, they'll say, you know. Oh, hey, you have down here that you need fifty thousand dollars. Will you be able to do your project? You know, most of the time they're going to say no because it's like, well, I didn't ask for fifty thousand dollars if I didn't need it. But sometimes they break it out like, oh, this pays for. Site work and this pays for gravel and this pays, I'm just shooting them in there. And then you say, oh, okay, so if we could get, if, you know. As we're deliberating, maybe we, what of these four things that you've parceled out are your priority? The commission will ask them that. And so then they make a note and that's how a lot of times things will get partially funded. So they'll partially fund it. Because they itemized it out and so they took their priority of those itemize of their.
From, from an organization standpoint. It helps for budgeting because you know. Not to expect. You know, what is requested. It's one of those things where you can use those funds. Those matching funds. You know, committed funds for other grants and stuff like that. I think that's a, a big challenge. You know, I, I know that I think everyone's aware. Shouldn't we were on how, how it functions? If there's not money, then you don't get money. That's pretty obvious. But it helps to, you know, for an organization to have that. It's a year in advance. Like this is not, this is money that was requested, like the spring. Will not be dispersed until. After next year. And it'd be nice to have a process, I think, what we learned this last year. And like you said, we learned it. We, we did experience something like you were person two thousand and three or four, someone back.
Like six, I think.
Two thousand and six. To me, it would. I'm thinking that we, I don't need to revisit. At the right time when you call for the questions about this idea of contingency because. It, it's a clear way to say, let's suppose you had a forecasting tool that you said. Hey, council, we're, we're sure, we're ninety-nine percent sure we're going to get a million dollars. Because last year was a disaster and we still got a million. Okay, fine. So set the budget in a million. And I'll use my example. We got all these projects that look great, like thirty were submitted. But only twenty of them. Cap into the million dollars. So you could hook those ten then down below in contingency. And then all of a sudden. And then all of a sudden, you did get, you know, one point two million. You got more, more, then you would have an order, the contingency items are all numbered and you could go.
Well, that's basically what we do now.
So why, why do you think that's not a good?
It gives this expectation that if I'm not in contingency, I'm gonna get funded. I'm expected to get funded because I'm not in contingency.
Friend has been for the past decade because we've had. Do you have a forecasting way to get, you know, I think we've pushed you really hard, council, to say, let's allocate much if we can, but perhaps we could cut it back to eight hundred thousand.
Of course, we can do that, but we don't have a crystal ball that will tell us, I mean, I, I would love to say that, yeah, we're absolutely gonna get him, I can't say that because I absolutely thought we would get one point one. And we got one point zero five, so I mean, it's like it, there's no crystal ball to say, I mean, yeah, we could go real low ball and say, we'll, we'll get eight hundred thousand. And then that leaves two hundred thousand that we would need to budget amend in August. And then, you know, and then all those people on the lower side of that, that additional two hundred thousand, then we get funding. I mean, we could do that, it'd be super conservative and, and.
Well, no matter, so, so what I'm learning is, let's say you're, you're only off by a hundred thousand, you still have to do a budget mid-year. Right? So what's the difference between, you know, a hundred thousand and two or three hundred? Ten projects. Yeah, the difference might be ten projects and at least it, it's a little clearer message to the public that we, you know, maybe we're, we're budgeting conservative. And if the money comes in better, we have a process to get these projects in that order. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to, to point something out that this year in particular, when the, the gripes that I were, was hearing I think more based on why are, you know, why are we at this point on the list? Rather, you know, it's, it's more of a, something that is not a, a hard.
Because they wanna be on the top of the list.
Yeah, or something like, why?
And, and the reason that where they fall is becau- and that's the document I really want you guys to look at too, is that um, that guidance document, because that, that is what applies the state law, the city law, the council's objective.
So this may, this may be a, a segue comment to that, except not done with that. Um, because I, I think the, where, personally, I think that the process works really well. Um, you guys do a great job of, of budgeting, like it's, you know, pretty on target, you know, predicting something that you don't know what's.
That's unpredictable.
They do a really great job of that. That's awesome. But uh what I was hearing this year is kind of something that has been the life of the lot. And it comes back to their earlier years and a lot of the, the heads and beds argument. That we're doing so much to bring people to our community, to put heads and beds that, you know, we shouldn't be the priority. There's a few organizations that still push that in their applications. And it's important because that's where money comes from. And so like that, that's kind of the, the lens of prioritizing these other projects, like what? I think what we're gonna talk about next is how do you prioritize and how do you score?
Yeah, I know. Gonna be great for you all to get very clear on that position before you go into this meeting next week with the lot commission who are all like fabulous people that wanna do the right thing and they wanna know that they're doing what you're asking. And so I think it's really gonna be a good conversation with them next week because they wanna make sure on your direction and can also share their experience, you know, going through this process and scoring these things and then they're really hard choices.
Yeah, it's very hard and.
To pick between all these really great entities and I'm sure it gets political behind the scenes maybe.
Well, and it's, it's, you know, one of the, the two things that are high on, that score something higher is the public purse, purpose and the tourist mitigation, because the council in reviewing the state legislation and such said, well, number one, the the applicant, the application has to serve a public purpose, right? It has to, in order for them to receive funding, it has to serve a public purpose. So that's part of the, the commission has to look at that, you know, what is the public purpose? And does it serve a greater number of the public? Or does it serve ten? You know, so then if it serves the greater number, then then that pushes the score higher again. Um, and then, um, you know, does it provide tourist mitigation? That, um, does it provide a service to the tur- to, to, to the citizens? Because our general fund can't support that, like, you know, sidewalk maintenance additional park maintenance or additional golf make or additional library maintenance. Those are things that take a hit because we have a lot of tourism and our general fund dollars just aren't enough to cover those things, right? Um, and then in looking at those applications, they really struggle because they really wanna give a certain amount to the, to the applicants that are not screwed. But, you know, one of the things I remind them often is that all of those city projects are community projects. They are there to benefit the community as a whole. It's not, it's not city staff going, oh, this is what I want. It's, it's looking at the budget and looking at the needs to service the community and that's why there are city applications for that money. It's to help mitigate that, right? And so, um, that'll be one of the questions to think about again is, do we want to say all city projects, you know, all the parks projects, golf projects, community development, all of it gets this dollar amount, no matter what, and then all the rest goes to community projects? That's an idea to think about. Um.
Where all the city money goes to housing and the rest goes to community projects.
That's something for you to consider. Um.
I have a thought. You may have had your hand up before I did, Linda, and maybe you're gonna address, you, you wanna go first? You want me to?
Actually, Lyle, you had your hand up first, but I was going to touch upon the budgeting process and the contingency conversation, so um, you decide which one you think you wanna hear first.
Uh, I'll go. Um, I think it's, there must be a really solid reason that we don't have the grant cycle such that we know what the lot amount is for that year. And the grants then are based on the actual eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, six hundred and seventy-seven, whatever. Because that, uh, actually, I can think of several scenarios where if you know the amount, you can do the best decision of how to divide it. When you don't know and you're making the contingencies, such as one of the issues Colby brought up, where's the two hundred thousand dollar project that stops all the rest from happening? So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that somewhere in the future, we can't adjust the grants funding to match the known amount.
And Lyle, that is something that Bessie Jo and I talked about, because right now the way the timing of the grant process is, we do an estimate, make awards and then we see what we get and then fund it. If we wanted to flip the timing and be like, okay, we just completed our budget year, we've collected X amount, we have that amount to spend on projects, it's the known amount. And then we go through the process to award it. I think we could switch that around, but the consequence would be that we would have to skip a year to switch the timing, right? We have to have a stop per year to put it on to a different schedule. So that is a concept. I mean, I think that's a way to do it as well. It's just that we would have to, uh.
We still have to budget it, uh, and Linda can speak to that, but I, you know, it still has to be
Right.
Just budgeted for LOT, I guess, and then distribute.
So I mean, there is, I think that's what you're asking about, while the timing of when the grant awards are decided compared to when we have the money.
Yes, and we might find a way, there's a way to do that, we think two years in advance. Um, that there will be a lag or a, I wouldn't call it, there might be a way where you don't have to totally skip a year, but you have to have a gap for sure. Anyhow, I, it would sure make it uh easier on the lot commission and they could actually do a better job, I think.
There's no way to save a portion for the next year's budget.
There you go. That's how you could do it.
An amount. So does the state law say we have to spend it the year we receive it?
Linda, can you, uh, rule, can you speak to that about paying it as we go?
Uh, my understanding is that it has to be appropriated. We have to have it budgeted. So, um, I, and the, so, and Bessie Jo, unless you are interpreting that somewhat differently, that's the way that we've always done it. I mean, there is some room for some change, I think there, can, so can I I'm gonna circle back to the contingency conversation, because I think this might lend some, a little bit of clarity. So there are contingencies budgeted every year in each fund. How, and those are for unanticipated revenues that we may receive throughout the year. And so we don't have to open the budget for every little contingency, contingent amount that comes in. So, and what happens is by the time we get to the end of the year for lot, we've already dipped in. So the general fund contingency starts at three hundred and fifty thousand. So if Delta gets a lot of grants or we have vehicles and insurance payments that get paid by ICRAM for damage to city property and then we need to fix that property, that also can eat into our contingent amount. So I think one way, one, one thing we could do is I could build in a contingent within the lot fund it, in and of itself. So an additional, whatever the determined amount is for that year that we think we might come in, but we're not hundred percent sure. So we could build that in there. But then the added complexity, what, one other thing that adds to complexity to the problem is LOT taxes collected in September are not received until the twentieth of October. But they're considered September revenues because they're due and payable by the people collecting the local option taxes at nine thirty. But we don't require payment to give them a chance to do their accounting is my, my perception on that until the twentieth of the month following. So, uh, that is where, when we had to give back the, provide tax relief with that fifty thousand that came in, we did have a sufficient number amount of budget, but we were just a little bit short of having appropriated projects and funds. And so, and at that point, it's too late to amend the fiscal, the previous fiscal year budget. It has to be amended prior to September thirty and noticed in the paper. So a contingency might help with that, but only as Bessie Jo has stated, and in that, what we think we're gonna get. I mean, we could fall short, we could have too much, but that might be a way to have contingency that's just dedicated to LOT and then doesn't get eaten up by grants and other miscellaneous revenues that are received by the city.
I have a question, Linda, if you don't mind.
No.
Do you mind answering questions? You know how we have a, in the capital fund, we appropriate, I think it's an appropriation, but it's reserves for future projects where we've captured the capital funding that we're not spending in the current year, but we know we're gonna spend it the next year because of multi-year projects, et cetera.
Yeah, it's current year revenues.
But couldn't we have in the lot fund to avoid this uh problem with underestimating or maybe this timing issue, couldn't we have an appropriation in there for um future projects? Whatever we wanna call it, where we would be able to, if, if we were to take a break and switch the timing, this is where I'm going with this. That particular year where we're only receiving lot funds, but we're not spending them, couldn't the expense or whatever be that, couldn't that appropriation to balance that fund be the like FY twenty-six lot projects, I don't know, whatever you wanna call it, so we capture it in FY twenty-five year, put it in that bucket and then, you know, it's spent in the in the following year, so that we're always capturing and putting it in that bucket and then, you know what I'm saying? Am I making any?
Uh, I think as, as long as we have, I'm sorry, Anna, I'll let you finish. Let me know when you're done.
Oh, I was just saying, making sure that we're following the rules on the budget.
I guess to clarify that, instead of like basing on the, the fiscal year to come, we're basing it on the.
Actual receipts.
The actual receipts.
That we've captured it at the end of September, we know we have exactly one million two hundred thousand five dollars.
And then.
And then they know exactly how to have the order.
They can express that.
Right.
The right, so the way, the way that scenario.
That in February, they would put it in October or whatever, I don't know.
Probably November.
Yeah, the timing, but then everybody knows exactly what the number is.
Yeah.
I don't know, just.
Yeah, and then they would.
It's a little complicated to get it rolling.
You know that you're getting that money that year.
Yeah.
You know, instead of the next year, because you, because you apply for funds for your following year. And this way you would apply for funds for that current year.
Yeah. It's a lot of sense. We just have the two hundred thousand dollars a year parts building.
Right, and then, but we just have to, we just have to, um, you know, go a year with no funding, that we don't want anything.
So I guess the question would be, would uh changing the timing of the process, like basically overhauling the entire process to accomplish the goal of certainty of the amount to award, if that is of interest to the council, then I think that would be a discussion with the lot commission to get their feedback on whether they think that's workable or preferable or maybe they have thoughts. So that is like one potential solution. And then, um, and then the other is whether we just stick with our current timing and process and try to have some kind of true up at the end of the fiscal year with enough time if you needed it for a budget amendment. And that discussion of this priority or contingency, because in the first um option of the changing the timing, the, um, there is no need for contingency, right? You already know what the money is.
Exactly.
You just need to.
Right.
Yeah.
Bet the application and make the awards. Well, and also if you don't go that way and you stick with the current method, you would still have to grapple with that question of what is the list?
The, also in kind of a, a meld of both the, the way we do it now and holding that until the following year is if the council said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna say that for city projects, we're gonna allow five hundred thousand dollars funded every year through LOT to city projects and the remainder goes to the lot commission to divvy out. And then that, and then we still know, we could still do that five hundred thousand every year for city stuff. You know, housing sidewalks, whatever. And then that other five hundred thousand would go to the um commission the following year to divvy out.
So you would, you would know that remaining balance.
Yeah, so you would know it in October, then they can meet in November and say, okay, we're gonna fund these projects from November, uh, we're, we'll find, they'll get all funded upfront, they'll all get funded upfront.
The city doesn't skip the year.
Right.
The, uh, yeah, and that's another benefit of switching the timing that you just touched on is that they would get their checks then. They wouldn't wait for the cash flow, right?
So, yeah, they would all get it upfront and probably December. So, yeah, they would all get it upfront and probably December because they go through the process in November, decide who all gets funded. And then they all, their contracts and their checks will go out in December.
Yeah, that's legal to do that. That helps with the question about the.
A lot of clarity for everyone.
I think it's too, timing wise for me, it's at the exact same time a short term run of news. I, I will resign now if I have to do all that at the same time. There's no way. Well, we would have to allot it at, or at, in, in, or pay it or something. Because I can't do both of them simultaneously. There's just no way. Or, or we'd have to move rules or something. I, I think it would solve so many problems. I, I really like that idea. I really do. We just have to figure out the timing.
Can I touch on the budget process before we leave this topic? So I just wanted to throw that out there. So when you guys are ready to hear that, let me know.
Yeah.
So, um. Just thinking about this for the last few minutes, couple of minutes, I think. We would do budget, we would budget for what we expected to get in the current year. We would budget appropriated fund balance. As well for what we've received in the prior year. However, I think there still might be some. Budgeting challenges for what we think we're going to get in any subsequent year. So. Perhaps a contingency amount that would cover what we think we might, or, you know, it's still, it's still gonna be a game of. You know, taking what we know and trying to do our best to come up with a number. So we're still kind of gonna be chasing that magical number. And then I, what, I wanna follow up on what Bessie Jo said because I was thinking this before she added that is that. Any council priorities or funding that are related to city projects to keep. City projects flowing or any commitments that you've made, you know, like the two hundred thousand a year to. Come back to the city for the parks move and then the downtown town sidewalks. So budgeting for those. To happen in the current year revenues is, is, would be my recommendation as well for city projects and whatever the golden amount is, if it's. Five hundred thousand or a percentage of the collections. Um, that would allow the city to continue to do what we're, we've committed to do for our population at large and. Um, you know, all of the stakeholders in McCall, tourists, tourists and citizens.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, it, budgeting is kind of a forecast anyway. It's all a guess anyway, right? So we would still, you know, we're only budgeting for, for city purposes and then, but we will actually have a. Hard number, um, November, because we'll know how much all came in. So that for the. Purpose of allocating that money, we'll know a hard number. But as far as budgeting, we.
Well, we would.
You know, it's just that we.
We would still budget all the things that Linda's talking about.
Now.
It's just that we would not take the next step of giving that estimate to the lot commission as they're urging orders for allocating funds. We will be managing the budget. And, you know, internally, all that kind of thing and that the number that's given to the lot commission to allocate is actually.
Exactly, and I think that's a, a really great idea. Um, it would make their job easier. I just wanted to make. I just wanted to point out, it's kind of a two-pronged issue. So. One, I think is relatively easy to solve. The other one is still going to be an ongoing juggling act by. Staff and council to try to make sure that we have appropriated funds enough. And so I think contingency might be a way to. Help with that somewhat.
I'm sorry, Coke.
No, go ahead, while you've been trying to get in there.
Okay, uh, it seems to me that we can, can, we've, uh, opened the possibility can make this happen on, on the right timeframe. Then another thought about that is, I think the city's projects would be somewhere around seventy percent. Uh, meaning, uh, affordable housing, sidewalks, uh, those type things which we consider, um, fairly. Necessary. How are, we might make it that those are the contingency. So for example, to make sure we've consumed all the tax we do collect. Let's just say local housing, affordable housing could be the. Almost the contingency as such, and it's four hundred thousand dollars, but we have a really good, we know we're coming in pretty close. So that last item, one of the cities items might be three hundred and fifty thousand instead of four hundred thousand. But those going to the lot commission is the fixed number and it almost kind of like flips it, puts that on the top of the list. Then puts the major city things, um. Secondary to that. So the lot knows what they're working with. We're fairly conservative with that amount of money. And then we make sure that we've, uh, budgeted what will exceed the lot on those other city categories. Thanks.
So instead of keeping the city, um. Projects flowing from year to year, that you would instead have the lot projects. Flow from year to year and then the known amount would go to the city payout in November.
Yeah, just a thought. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, you, you all know more than I do about it. I'm just trying to. Open that opportunity or possibility. How, how to make it happen, I think.
We would have to set that amount that, I mean, that would be like saying all these other organizations just. Would have to set an amount, say like three hundred thousand, whatever.
Yeah, whatever that number is, you would have to say, okay, we're gonna allocate for local option tax going forward. Um, a set amount of four or five hundred thousand dollars that will go to community projects only and everything else goes to the city. No matter how much we collect, everything else goes to city projects.
Right.
Well, the percentage, we're back to then having to wait until the end. To determine how much is collected to determine that percentage. So I always feel like a hard number is easier. And you don't have to wait for that hard number.
Process if you get awarded in January. Money that is gonna be the, for the city in the next, that would. Since that current, current year budget's already been set, it would. Be figured for the following fiscal year. To know that you have X amount of dollars.
I think we'd have to go. To like go back and really map this out if this is the direction that the council wants to go and then. Make sure that we've considered all the angles on. Top of our heads right now, but if the concept. Sounds attractive and lot commission thinks it sounds attractive, I think we could, as staff. Come up with the actual. Flow and timing and, and like really map it out to make sure we don't accidentally, you know, have an unintended.
That's what we need because.
And then bring that back to you to be like, okay, this is how it would have to work and make sure you're good with it.
I don't think we'd actually skip a year either.
Right, that's what I'm gonna do is kind of pull it out to make sure that. Yeah.
Yes, like I say, we changed it for this year. We have already awarded. The upcoming year is through the summer and through the fiscal year, the money's collected. With this going up normally, how it is. Only difference is the following year, instead of applying for it this spring. You apply for it at the end, so it's really kind of still on the same.
Kind of getting the money. Well, you might be convening the lot commission twice this year, right? They would do one on their normal process, no?
No.
No, we would delay it.
Have already been allotted.
Yeah.
That's what they did last year. We have not, we have not put out the application yet for twenty twenty-five. Which normally go out in the spring. So if we.
Like we're close to the timing of.
In May, they would be allotting money for twenty twenty-five. So if we wanted to wait until the twenty twenty-five funds were in, then they would be getting allotted at the end of twenty twenty-five.
Well, the thing that we have to consider too is in the ordinance, it dictates when we, um. Accept those applications. It says, or I've been there, that applications are accepted to April, the last day of April. So I don't know what kind of. Conundrum that'll create.
I don't know, we have. We hold on to them until. You know.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we can. I mean, they're still then just, um. They're still, uh, they would still be applying for the funds a year ahead. It's just that instead of. So they, they apply for them in April, then we know what the funds are in.
Does it say?
Until.
But these are the things we have to work out.
So the application aren't specific in the ordinance, right? It just says you need to give us something by the end of April. And then we determine what that something is, correct?
I don't understand that. I'm.
So I, my, I'm.
I don't know what something is.
So the ordinance says they have to give us an application by whatever they just said. But that's, uh, right, it doesn't say in the application includes. So, so the application could be something under the ordinance, as simple as I intend to apply for the response. And then.
I'll, that's a valid question.
Get the actual detail.
Like a pre-application kind of.
Yeah, but like they get something in to meet the intent of the ordinance, but they don't really have to guess so far in it. Yes, but it's truly part of advance and still have a secondary, like a detail come to a lot commission.
And those are the, that, that would be the stuff we had to work out.
As long as we have some.
Well, yeah, we got.
Those are the things.
You gotta check all that stuff out.
If we're gonna try to make it, because I think what I keep hearing is the uncertainty is the problem. The uncertainty and the, um. Expectation.
That would really address those two things. Um, and then at the same time, as you all have said and Linda said, so you gotta make sure all these skirts. Building them in a grand hall, we still gotta pay that bill, because I remember.
Yeah.
Every year, you don't get to take a year off.
Three years coming this year.
And I remember how hard you worked to make all of that library stuff. So that's a, that's a check that we have to sign cash.
Well, the monies could still be coming in. And so anything that was pre-allotted, we, you know, two hundred thousand, we know we're gonna get that much, it can still.
So we just.
Even if we wait for the applications to do.
And the sidewalks might be also in that. I'm just saying, we gotta figure that out as well.
Yeah.
But I think someone asked if it was a net. Are we interested? Yeah, I think. You know, collectively, we've been on something that could be a lot better for everybody.
To do this potentially if you look at the, the city projects, you have the set number and that's. Decided going into the fiscal year.
During our regular budget process.
And so that's the normal budget process. And, you know, that set number is low enough that. We know that we will cross that line and. You know, as that, as those funds come in, they're used for the, that fiscal year, city project. And then. You know, at that point, it's cut off and then through the remainder of the fiscal year, but. We're getting more money at the end of the year. We know exactly how much we have. Do the application process and then disperse funds in January or something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Pretty well.
Yeah. It's a great idea.
Yeah, I think Annette really summed it up when, when if. You know, that Linda, Sarah and Bessie Jo can look at the things we might not have foreseen if we make this switch and bring it back to us. Um, and it might be that the things they bring back are even better than what we envisioned, but I think it needs to go through tho- those three people to look at the ordinance and. All of that and that, uh, we're, um, enthused to see if this is a good, uh. New process.
That's great. Okay, so we'll just cruise through to the, um. To the questions, um, that just goes through, uh, the process of how it's currently distributed. The reallocation request, so that's the other piece was, um. You know, historically, they've been approved. The city attorney reviewed the ordinance and it's legal in the way that we are doing it. Um, the applicants, uh, historically, the applicants have requested reallocation. Under a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's their project was less than they had determined, so they had leftover. And so they asked to reallocate the leftover to another project. Or the project that they had it allocated to wasn't viable anymore and so they asked. To put it to a different project. Or something came up that was more emergent. Than their original project that was funded and so then they asked to reallocate it. So those are the. The main reasons for reallocation now. If the council wants to make a policy decision around reallocation, you certainly can. Do that. If you want to make sure that they always return the funds, if they can't use it for that project. Um, we could, you all can make that as a policy decision or if you. Are okay with the way that it's being currently done, or if there's another way, um, that you can think of to address it.
I think my, the heartbreak that I had this year with the reallocation, which I think the current process is fine and it works, but. Going in the year where we. Had a shortfall of funds, we're not able to fund everything all the way through to reallocate something. In that year rather than funding. An additional project or whatever. That, that was a challenge I had, but if we're able to eliminate the, you know.
That.
That problem, then it's, it should be an on-issue.
And we'll always have that during the tenure of city council people. We'll always have that. Challenge, you know, to do a reallocation.
Yeah.
For a variety of reasons that you've talked about. I think it's good that we have the flexibility, as long as it's legal and. Council members feel it's fair.
Well, I mean, if we had all enough money to fund projects and they had something that was left over and we didn't reallocate it. I mean, there are no other projects to go to, so we'd have to give it back or.
So what they, what it would do, yeah, so what has happened historically is like, let's say that there's a. Five thousand dollar project and they only needed four thousand dollars. So then they give a thousand dollars back. It just goes into the fund. And so then, and so then it goes to fund that current year. So then it increases the amount, you know, it's. Like income for that year, so. All right, so. We will come back with some scenarios as far as how to, um. Change the timing. I got that from every, a sense from everybody that you would like us to do that. Um, do you want to designate a certain dollar amount for city projects? Or do you want that done during the budget process and the city requests that through the budget process? And then, um, we know that it comes right off the top of L O T and then. We determine that process.
I'm not sure we're ready today to make the final decisions on that, but yes, I think the council is interested. I mean, we've got, it probably laid it out and so did Lyle. I think the number is around seven hundred thousand dollars. We got two hundred thousand on sidewalks, three hundred on, uh, uh, possibly for housing. That we have as L O T. And then there was another.
Except the parks.
The parks building. So at some point, we need to make a decision, um. Are we gonna continue to do that? Because.
Yeah, there's other golf projects and that, the top sort of things. I think this is getting at that, um.
Notion of what is aside for the city that's not part of the competitive process.
So there would still be other things that would be competitive process.
Um, right, and that's some of the feedback. I think I've heard from the lot commission is why are you making us evaluate these. Projects that we know this council already said they're gonna fund, like it's kind of a waste of their time. Um. Um, but others. On the flip side, it's good education for them about what we're raising the funds for and why, what makes sense, but. Uh, so I think that's what this is getting at, this choice of the council's gonna prioritize the city projects that will be funded. The lot commission will prioritize what's gonna be funded.
Through the application.
Question that we want to confirm. That probably want to confirm, right?
Yeah, yeah, we want them to go all through the lot commission or do you want to have you guys choose or do your own. Decision on on city pieces.
Right.
Yeah.
And they would be eliminated from the competitive.
Right, so there's those items that we need to agree upon, yes or no, do we want to set those? Those aside upon the top and then the and that's as yours may involve basically a basic number. And then everything after that is what the L O T.
Is the competitive process.
Various other projects for other nonprofits, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
Yeah, and we might flip that. So so the three hundred thousand, roughly thirty percent of of what we are now. Goes to the lot commission to determine for the community, community organizations. And then we uh have that remaining amount and the city, I don't think the lot commission should, the city every year can decide. Um, housing will still be a priority, sidewalks will be, something else might be in there. And we over-budget slightly on that side to meet the fact that uh all the money used is going to lot considerations. So the the city projects are still in the lot, but it is a city project that might end up being short. Um, some aspect from that year for the first couple of years, so that that's where I would see it. I would think the three hundred thousand is a given and it's on the top.
So you're saying that three, so you're suggesting that three hundred thousand is the hard number for all the competitive process? And that all city projects, whether they're the top priority or not, um go to uh would be funded through whatever's remaining.
Correct.
It needs to be the other way around, I think, while that that what Bob was saying, that those those dedicated ones, like for instance. Through twenty twenty-six, we have two hundred thousand dollars that goes towards the Parks Building move. That needs to be on the top and not at the bottom.
Right, but he I think what he's also saying is like all of the golf requests and all of the. You know, all the other, not those four that are at the top, but all those others also don't go through the competitive process and is used with the remains.
There are almost three tiers, the first whatever, five hundred for sidewalks, housing, parks, building. The next three hundred for the nonprofits and everything and anything that's left.
For for the city projects.
So the the challenge, and that would kind of put it in the position of the competitive funding anyway, as for the city projects. I think the challenge, the if we were to switch the timing. The the city uh projects that are in the competitive cycle. They would get funded in one fiscal year, but they had planned that to expand those funds. In the following fiscal year, more than likely, and would that.
Something wants to have to think through. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Definitely seems like simplified to the idea, and I guess first going back to what Bob said, it seems simplified to say. There's certain items that are off the top that are towards, you know, commitments and the maintenance of things related to the impacts of tourism. Other items that are on this list. And then and then the balance is for the L O T commission to say. Where do they store and and all that for these other things, where there are entities that are definitely good projects that they're trying to accomplish. They they here's an opportunity for potential grant funding. Fantastic, part of our community, or whether it's part of our community or whether it's they want a new weed eater at the golf course or whatever these items are. Everybody's on this competitive thing towards all of that, because those aren't necessarily, as we're not trying to, the L O T isn't trying to fund someone's annual general. Operator.
It shouldn't, right.
It's for projects. We need a new Zamboni at the ice rink, we, right?
Well, and I think I think that if that uh um, I mean, my personal opinion, I agree with you, but that hasn't been. You know, we haven't, uh, the council hasn't made that policy decision where you want those projects to be projects and not part of somebody's general fund. And so that would be a policy decision that the council would need to make, and then we would communicate it out to the people applying for funds. This is project only, not part of your operating budget.
A project could last for months.
A project could last, be part of a project that's for several years, but they're looking to get this, but get another, right?
Yeah, or.
I mean, it could be.
Or it could be.
But it's not paying employees or regular maintenance.
Right. Right, right, so it could be towards, you know, something that is a piece of something.
But we have the project applications, I mean, that could be clear, the main application, whether it appears to be a. Something that they're relying on for year to year, since it's a multi-year project.
Yeah, because they could supply their budgets.
For the the heads and pats argument, that is a very strong argument for this. And by local people in any our constituent. Um. Is, you know, like, for instance, like the the civil field, like the parking lot maintenance or like the ice rink. A lot of it is they request maintenance stuff. Um, to to maintain those facilities that attract visitors that add to their funds in the lot funds. So like that's.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting it needs to be a specific project, like it needs to be that, you know, I need five new tea bars.
Yeah.
Or I need this, or I need a weed eater, whatever, it's just to say that that those are all the ones that fall in that, right? Like, so it certainly can be, we're requesting for maintenance, the parking lot. Right, yeah, yeah.
But if you want to pay their employees, is what I was hearing.
What I'm saying is that in order to exist as a business or an entity, it should be something that they're counting on to keep the lights on. It should be something that they're working towards a good public project, which is kind of what it states, right? So uh 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 maintenance of a bathroom at a trailhead. Is a good public project, but that is not that they're paying their executive director to exist.
Yeah.
And what, right?
Well, I mean, like, if you look at, you know, for like the chamber and fireworks, whatever, you know, it's a continuing thing. Not this, you know, for all intents and purposes, their their business and their. Asking for funds to continue, continue the operation by the works.
Mm hmm.
Um, but if they if they don't do it, which now they're not, I mean, they still exist.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's a it's a project, it's a project they do every year, but they don't have to.
Yeah.
It doesn't make them exist.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I think that that's what he's getting at is is, you know, the funds should not determine whether or not that organization will be able to continue to exist.
That's a good example, and I think we're okay with fireworks on that because it's a project, it's a contract. It's like you're saying, not paying for salary for the change, it's paying a contract to provide a service. And same thing, like you mentioned, if someone needs to buy equipment, it, you know, and. That's different than saying just normal salaries of. They don't want them to be reliant, no one would be reliant.
That will all shake out when the block commissioner reviews them, because they have to go back to what's the public purpose of that money.
Yeah.
And in my mind, you know, as these folks do the contracts afterwards with those entities for the crown awards, it's saying. Here's the deliverable, the community is getting for these funds, right? And so if someone's just saying, well, I need money to pay the heat bill for the winter. It's probably not gonna score on the criteria and it's gonna fall out of the process anyway, I think. I think what you are all discussing kind of gets taken care of in that.
But does the does they like plowing the parking lot for winter?
And they've debated that in the past and obviously come up with the conclusion that, yeah, it is a.
Or crew in the north.
But they have statistics.
Sure, but the question is, is I guess just whether that organization seems for the profit, if they're counting on that to function as a business. There's no guarantee that the L O T commission is going to prioritize it relative to other applications there. So it would be hard as a nonprofit business, for instance, to be counting on. I guess that's where I was just questioning.
But, yeah, they.
Counting on one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to plow for to clear sidewalks, you know?
I think it's um.
So then are we prioritizing certain items or is the L O T commission needing to prioritize certain items that the council directs them to prioritize?
Right, so you're okay.
You say like, we need to have this ongoing one.
I think I I think that Annette did hit on that, though, that it same those things will just fall out during the process now. Um, if, you know, again, you know, the the applicants are told. Do not depend on this money, this is, this is, you know, it depends.
The timing.
But it's the timing thing.
Yes, because we'll say, this is the amount we have, you all, everyone's awarded, done. And they don't have to go, oh, my depending on this timing, it's not gonna get it.
Just I suppose there's a little bit of, you know, potential for them to depend on it as an applicant. I mean, once it's awarded, once you say, yes, you got it, you got it, I mean, there's gonna be some people that don't get awarded and then they're gonna be like.
Yeah, exactly, well, and I think that when we meet with the commission next Thursday. And and you talk about your priorities and the budget setting and those ideas and get their their ideas on that. The big thing, and you have it in your packet, is the commission guidance document. Please take the time to really go through that, so that when we're with the commission, because the commission has some ideas about that. And so some of the things that you're talking about can be part of the scoring criteria. Is this a true project or does this contribute to their overall operations budget? Maybe it's worth lower because it's an operations budget item and not a project, I I don't know. But that's something that you can look at and how we're gonna use that guidance document for them to prioritize. And and recommend for funding. So um that's gonna be a big bulk of your discussion on um on Thursday, we hope to keep it at two hours. And so we know that the priorities and budget setting is gonna be a big piece and then the guidance document. So um I would say an hour for the priorities and budget and then um an hour for the guidance document, so um.
I guess the last thing I would throw out there, just as a reminder, is and typically been super respectful of the block commissioners recommendations and all the work they've been discovering. But ultimately, you know, the council is making the decision, and so if there was a time that something related to senate that, well, with you and the. Uh, recommendation the commission sent to you, it's fully within your authority to move things around and you have, you know, occasionally shuffled here and there. But um just a reminder that.
Yeah.
You ultimately make the final decision on the awards. So, you know, you have that additional opportunity to make tweaks if you're really feeling hurt about it.
Order to give them the direction upfront, let them make the decision rather than come around on the back and after they've done all this work and say, oh, no, we see it.
Do what we wanted.
Right.
Right, and one of the.
Because they do put a lot of time.
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the things with the guidance document that we want to remember that's really important is public purpose and tourism mitigation, because those are.
Yeah.
In the law. Directive, so um and I know that that's one of those things, the was it tourist mitigation that they have, which I want, mission? Okay.
And not adding any more pressure to the equation, but um. Law statewide is always under the microscope, um they're they've been there and I just that's a lot of time that's during the capital and. You know, there are a lot of groups that are forming to try to change this law to allow other cities that are not resort cities to move lot. To change it so that we have to offset our property taxes, we get lot, I mean, there's like always something. And um what I think has been really helpful is we have such a transparent process and monitoring process. That we can't tell our story to the legislature about how it's working well. Um, when they get wound up about businesses, they think not or whatever, so. And there is bigger value to your work on all of this than just, you know, what people do work at. Our process as an example. Um, it's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so good on you. Um, but yeah, this this is gonna come up, if not discussion, duck session. And there are definitely groups forming so that counties can do it. Other cities, Twin Falls is making a big push that their tourism community, because so many people drive in to their community to go to Costco. Uh, or whatever, um, so there's just chatter there. This law on the books. Which makes all of us in the resort cities super nervous that if they open that up, the legislature and the people who don't like cities are gonna use it as a way to like end it. Take it away, because they don't want the taxes. It's never guaranteed.
It's funny that you say that about coming into a good Costco or something, because uh yesterday the chamber, when, you know, we're talking.
Oh, yes.
Remember people coming in, they're like, well, we don't normally don't pay attention to just the day trappers, people stay overnight, but. They're there.
Have an impact on the roads and their.
Overnight, yeah, anyway.
And they spend money.
Right.
And they spend money.
And they spend money, yeah.
Well, and so the point of these other cities is. All the sales tax collected in their communities from all of these folks goes to the state. Um, and they're not having any benefit at the local level and they have no ability to collect a sales tax on their own. Um, so that's where they're coming from, it's trying to address traffic and pavement and all infrastructure stuff of having. Population swings in their communities, not necessarily because of tourism. I mean, which I can see, but makes me nervous that they're trying to hitch their wagon to the world tourism.
Yeah.
And what that might trigger on our little part of the world and statues, I think.
What Costco's in Green Park.
Especially during the holidays, but you have to take it anyway.
Okay, so all right, so next is we will um mute for lunch. And then um the idea is the kind of food that it is is kind of a walking lunch, so you guys can walk around. Talk to different department heads, because we found that when everybody sits, then you don't get to talk to a lot of people, right?
There's not enough room for everybody at the table.
So we thought it would be nice to, you're sitting all day, you can walk.
Hotel, probably with no cocktails.
Yeah, all right, so everybody that's online, we are going to mute for lunch.
All right, we're back from break.
I'm sorry.
Um, oh, do I volume on or something? Yeah, I do. Um, so this is the part of your day where we reflect and you'll move in, I guess, your council priorities. I think after that, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but um, this year is a little different. So that printout is just, it's there in case you are a reader and a holder and a toucher. The goal this year with um, this reflections document is to be an online document. Um, we don't exactly have people knocking down the door asking me for a printed copy of our annual report. So I created it as a slide deck this year for a couple of reasons. One, um, it enables me to provide ADA access to the community that might need and use readers for this um, document. Um, two, uh, it allows me to create a sort of QR code and online um, presence with it. And then it also has this really neat um, product embedded in it. It allows me to transfer this document into different bite-sized pieces and sort of um, engaging the public with different pieces of it using photographs basically out of it in a really simple and easy way. So for example, if there's a big question in the community about local option tax, they can snapshot on that and take a photo right out of the annual report and use that in some social media or online posts. Um, my goal is not to read all of this to you. It's 118 pages of love. Um, what I want to do is just highlight a couple of pieces for you. So I created a little quick recap to just go through with you. And by quick, it's 77 pages, but it won't take that long, I promise. Um, so um, this again, I'll just reiterate, this is created as a draft for you each year. And that's with the intention that we'll take our priorities set today and we'll incorporate that into the document. Um, if you have changes over the next week after you've perused it or things you'd like to see added, we'll do that. Um, I'm also going to be adding um, a budgetary appendix. You'll see at the end, we actually have a link out to our current budget or that first budget for fiscal year 23. But um, we'll be creating some appendix pieces to add into this too. Um, so anyway, we'll move forward. So um, let's see if I can advance it. Um, so cool fact is these table of contact contents now on the online document, you can click to them and jump directly to the um, category you're most interested in. So it'll make it a little bit more user-friendly. Um, a lot of the verbiage that you'll see in here is nothing new. It's government leadership, you know, of what we've done. Some of you let me take new headshots of you, so you'll see that in there. Um, some of our headshots, full disclosure for staff, um, haven't been done, so I took them out of this online version I'm showing. There's some of you at the library. And then here's where we're outlining last year's um, at the last retreats, council priorities for 2023. We have a separate document of the accomplishments as related to that, that'll be integrated into this one, which is this here, and we can go over that if maybe I can, that too. Um, so each of these um, sections um, highlights the different categories that you allocated last year as your major council priorities. Um, and then we'll go over later as well, we did a survey of the community, talk about what they wanted to, to set your priority that this year. So that'll be good feedback for you. Of course, we're thanking our volunteers and highlighting our regional connections. Some of you attended the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council Summit, that's that picture from them. Um, of course, farmer's market this year was a cool highlight in our downtown core, so there's some information about that. My personal favorite, the grant funding. Um, once again, thanks to Delta for all she does to make a lot of the amazing projects that we have going on possible. Um, this highlights all of those um, grants that we received this year so the public can stay connected. And then in the governance portion, I highlighted ordinances, resolutions, and proclamations. I just highlighted ordinances here so that you can see, you guys do a lot of good work, so the public has a nice snapshot of what you've accomplished. And then um, each of the departments reported highlights or accomplishments from their year or challenges. Um, and I'll let you read through those at your own time, but I think what the, the main themes that I want to share with you this year that I've seen is everybody's working at a really high level to create more work or to satisfy more work requirements than ever before. Um, and so you'll see a lot of these graphs and charts in here that are showing sort of year-over-year increases. Um, just processing more paperwork for the finance department, the clerks department, with everything all the other departments do. Um, challenges, again, dealing with staff shortages, people commented on just dealing with more work than ever before. Um, and I think that um, it's enlightening, so I encourage you to read at least the highlights and challenges from each of the departments. Um, here's an example of the records requests, and you can see the growth in records requests over time. So it's pretty fun. Alcohol permits, things like that, so you can see snapshots of that in here. Here's what you guys talked about earlier this morning, these are expenses by category as for your local option tax. So this is great for the public to be able to log in and sort of see where the money um, is categorized. And then a list of all of the funded projects in 2023 are in there as well. Um, again, just showing that growth, um, increase for the finance department is what this chart is looking at. Um, finance highlights, again, challenges, some of what I mentioned before. McCall and police department highlights, I mean, they've got a new fancy gym, he might let you use it, you guys want to work out? Um, and how that project came to be and all the, the partners that went into that are all highlighted in here for you. Some really fun things, they did their first annual awards banquet this year. Um, there were a lot of awards that were given out, and those are actually listed in this document, all of the awards of merit. A lot of the departments actually highlighted um, different employees that were either honored, received a merit award of some sort, or even like Morgan who passed her test this year, um, her engineering test this year. What's that called, Nathan? Like he said, she did that, so all of that's highlighted in there. Um, we actually put a form out to all of our department heads and asked them to sort of fill out all this information so we make sure they don't miss anything for you. Um, awards and certifications, as you can see, some life-saving award there to Mr. Kimmel, so you guys can look back and see all these different training opportunities and certifications from different staff members. Um, again, highlights for the library achievements, tours. I've even got some extra graphics that I'll put in here. Meg had us start to create a while back, a milestone chart, which will make sure we link into this document as well, which sort of shows in photo and picture graphic elements um, what we've been able to accomplish over at the library. Then the grants specifically as related to the library, and then partnerships. Um, here's our housing highlights.
All right, we're back from break. Um, oh, do I volume on or something? Yeah, I do. Um, so this is the part of your day where we reflect and you'll move in, I guess, your council priorities. I think after that, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but um, this year is a little different. So that printout is just, it's there in case you are a reader and a holder and a toucher. The goal this year with um, this reflections document is to be an online document. Um, we don't exactly have people knocking down the door asking me for a printed copy of our annual report. So I created it as a slide deck this year for a couple of reasons. One, um, it enables me to provide ADA access to the community that might need and use readers for this um, document. Um, two, uh, it allows me to create a sort of QR code and online um, presence with it. And then it also has this really neat um, product embedded in it. It allows me to transfer this document into different bite sized pieces and sort of um, engaging the public with different pieces of it. Using photographs basically out of it in a really simple and easy way. So for example, if there's a big question in the community about local option tax, they can snapshot on that and take a photo right out of the annual report and use that in some social media or online posts. Um, my goal is not to read all of this to you. It's 118 pages of love. Um, what I want to do is just highlight a couple of pieces for you. So I created a little quick recap to just go through with you and by quick it's 77 pages, but it won't take that long, I promise. Um, so um, this again, I'll just reiterate, this is created as a draft for you each year. And that's with the intention that we'll take our priorities set today and we'll incorporate that into the document. Um, if you have changes over the next week after you've perused it or things you'd like to see added, we'll do that. Um, I'm also going to be adding um, a budgetary appendix. You'll see at the end, we actually have a link out to our current budget or that work budget for fiscal year 23. But um, we'll be creating some appendix pieces to add into this too. Um, so anyway, we'll move forward. So um, let's see if I can advance it. Um, so cool fact is these table of contact contents now on the online document, you can click to them and jump directly to the um, category you're most interested in. So make it a little bit more user friendly. Um, a lot of the verbiage that you'll see in here is nothing new. It's government leadership, you know, of what we've done. Some of you let me take new headshots of you, so you'll see that in there. Um, some of our headshots, full disclosure for staff, um, haven't been done, so I I took them out of this online version I'm showing. There's some of you at the library. And then here's where we're outlining last year's um, at the last retreats, council priorities for 2023. We have a separate document of the accomplishments as related to that, that'll be integrated into this one, which is this here, and we can go over that um, if maybe I can add to. Um, so each of these um, sections um, highlights the different categories that you allocated last year as your major council priorities. Um, and then we'll go over later as well, we did a survey of uh, the community, talk about what they wanted to to set your priority that this year. So that'll be good feedback for you. Of course, we're thanking our volunteers and highlighting our regional connections. Some of you attended the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council Summit. That's that picture from them. Um, of course, farmer's market this year was a cool highlight in our downtown core, so there's some information about that. My personal favorite, the grant funding. Um, once again, thanks to Delta for all she does to make a lot of the amazing projects that we have going on possible. Um, this highlights all of those um, grants that we received this year so the public can stay connected. And then in the governance portion, I highlighted ordinances, resolutions and proclamations. I just highlighted ordinances here so that you can see you guys do a lot of good work. So the public has a nice snapshot of what you've accomplished. And then um, each of the departments reported highlights or accomplishments from their year or challenges. Um, and I'll let you read through those at your own time. But I think what the the main themes that I want to share with you this year that I've seen is everybody's working at a really high level to um, create more work or to satisfy more work requirements than ever before. Um, and so you'll see a lot of these graphs and charts in here that are showing sort of year over year increases. Um, just processing more paperwork for the finance department and the clerks department with everything all the other departments do. Um, challenges, again, dealing with staff shortages. People commented on just dealing with more work than ever before. Um, and I think that um, it's enlightening, so I encourage you to read at least the highlights and challenges from each of the departments. Um, here's an example of the records requests and you can see the growth in records requests over time. So it's pretty fun. Alcohol permits, things like that, so you can see snapshots of that in here. Here's what you guys talked about earlier this morning, use your expenses by category as for your local option tax. So this is great for the public to be able to log in and sort of see where the money um, is categorized. And then a list of all of the funded projects in 2023 are in there as well. Um, again, just showing that growth um, an increase for the finance department is what this chart is looking at. Um, finance highlights, again, challenges, similar to what I mentioned before. McCall and police department highlights, I mean, they've got a new fancy gym, he might let you use it, you guys want to work out? Um, and how that project came to be and all the the partners that went into that are all highlighted in here for you. Some really fun things, they did their first annual awards banquet this year. There were a lot of awards that were given out and those are actually listed in this document, all of the awards of merit. A lot of the departments actually highlighted um, different um, employees that were either honored, received a merit award of some sort, or even like Morgan who passed her test this year, um, her engineering test this year. What's that called Nathan? Like he said, she did that. So all of that's highlighted in there. Um, we actually put a form out to all of our department heads and asked them to sort of fill out all this information so we make sure they don't miss anything for you. Um, awards and certifications, as you can see, some life saving award there to Mr. Kimmel. So you guys can look back and see all these different training opportunities and certifications from different staff members. Um, again, highlights for the library achievements, tours. I've even got some extra graphics that I'll put in here. Um, Meg had us start to create a while back, a milestone chart, which will make sure we link into this document as well. It sort of shows in photo and picture graphic elements, um, what we've been able to accomplish over at the library. Then the grants specifically as related to the library and then partnerships. Um, here's our housing highlights. Um, I thought I would just hit on this one for you to make sure you know it's there. In addition to our summary of your council priorities and accomplishments, your department heads have actually drilled down into what their specific accomplishments were in some of these areas. And this is an example, um, that picture down there at the bonnie, remember as the McCall Donnelly School District Housing um, project and of course the toaster. Um, and it highlights the housing coordinator position, you know, the assessment with West Central Mountains Economic Development Council, et cetera. So I wanted to just give you that quick snapshot so you can see what's in there. Um, I recommend that you dig into each of the departments and just, what I really want to know from you is if you want to see more of anything. Um, my favorite part about the back is that all there are resources. So let me see if I can get out of here and get in here. Give us a slight delay, you might not let me have it. So at the end, um, I've linked to your um, your budget, how to make a comment, how to, what the differences between making a public comment and a staff comment. Um, there's links to our um, staff directory directly to our website. Um, all of the budget documents are linked in at the end. So it's going to be a really easy resource for people at the very end to just link in and find the information that they need right away. Um, so I'm hoping that'll be a cool feature. So um, questions at hand, you know, Annette and I always like to know if you like this format, if you think it's going to work out for you and if you'd like to see any changes made to it. And then typically in February, I um, go ahead and post in March and introduce it to the public. So I'll leave it to you to ask any questions.
Can we just give compliments?
Yes, I can make a compliment.
We like the format, you're doing a great job on this, so we'll, we'll be sure and look through it. You said you'd like edits by next week, right?
Yeah, I mean, the beautiful thing about this new um, document is that I can actually go in there and make changes whenever and it'll change it on the fly for the public. So if we see any major changes, once the department heads, they, full disclosure, I got the flu last week and our department heads haven't even seen it. They're probably like, oh, this looks greater and never seen before. Uh, but they might also have changes or additions, um, which of course we'll make and publicize those once everything's done. And um, with that will come a restructuring of your council page and all your new photos will be placed up there with your improved contact information.
It's a lot of work, nice work.
My favorite. I just have one um, question. Will the city mission vision be one of the front two, three pages?
Yeah, so Lyle, I apologize because you're not here, you don't actually have your eyes on the real total document, but it is actually, our mission vision statement is on what, page four, page five? Um, and I'm going to link in the chat window right now where you can actually see the the actual document, Lyle, I apologize.
No, that's fine. Uh, thanks. I think it's always a good reminder for the citizenry to know what true north is. Thank you.
Absolutely. People plodding there for him. Um, what is next on the agenda, Nathan, such as for him?
I was just going to ask each department head if they want to highlight like the one or two big things on your plate this coming year. Kind of reminder to be careful about what your, what the big things are that you're planning to get accomplished this year before we get into the council talking about their reaffirming for priorities or adding priorities just so they have a grounding in there. So, um, just not all of you get the opportunity to be presenting in front of the council regularly, like maybe Nathan. But, so anyway, I don't know, Dallas, do you want to talk a little bit about your big ideas for police this year?
Um, well, for us this year, our big focuses are really, I think number one, our accreditation. We've never been accredited as a law enforcement agency. Um, we do a lot really well, we train really, really well, we develop awesome officers, we have a great team. Um, but we don't recognize that by going out to an outside source such as ICOPA or these other entities that do accreditation and say, hey, come take a look at uh, what we do, review what we're doing. Uh, and basically stamp that we're doing it correctly. So it's something that we need to do. I think it's something that um, our community would appreciate. I know I would appreciate having that stamp of approval, knowing that things are in order correctly. Um, so that's something that we've been working on this year, excuse me, with uh, our staffing shortage. As they kind of put a hang up and completing that process. Looking to complete that, um, we'll certainly focus on our recruitment and retention and getting staffing to where uh, it needs to be. We're just about there, we have some, we have some background process right now, so we're about to finalize that, so. Um, the one other thing would be our joint agency training. Um, it's been a big focus of mine over this past year and a half. We've had some improvement there. Um, but I think we all know for critical incidents within our area, right? We're going to be, it's not going to be just McCall PD responding, but it's going to be McCall PD, Valley County Sheriff's Office, likely four service area, especially Dean. Um, and their conservation officers, McCall fire, Donnelly fire. Um, so doing those major incident uh, joint training scenarios to be best prepared for those type of incidents, they could likely come at some point, right? So um, that's really, I think, our three big focuses that we've come.
Got questions or?
Well, can we pass on compliments?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for everything. How are you doing?
Thank you, appreciate it. We have an awesome group and it's taken time, I think, to get where we're at, but uh, it really is a great group. And we brought in uh, some really great experience and real knowledgeable individuals throughout this past year. So um, we're going to bring them to you guys so you can meet them here soon. We talked about having that here and then that changed. Um, and with our ship working, making that work. So we'll bring them to a council meeting, um, so that you guys, they can be introduced and you guys can see them.
And we have the uh, opportunity to go on a ride along with you, your perspective on how everything's going and then you see our need.
Yeah, our door's always open. Um, and anytime you guys want to stop by the PD, uh, mornings are usually quieter, come by, have a cup of coffee. Um, and certainly show you around, uh, chat with the team and you're always more than welcome, jump in the car and uh, see how we operate.
Okay, so accreditation, that's really, really important. I'm really excited that you know how to do that. Of course, you have been a um, a member of Teddy Love's ICOPA meetings. It's great that that group would help us with that. Yeah, because not only is it something nice on paper, but you might find some things that we can do that would be helpful.
And there's some uh, respect for that stamp, right, or some appreciation um, through ICRA, our insurance carrier, right? They give us a, I believe it ends up being a 20% discount on those costs with Adam at accreditation. And so uh, we thankfully, again, put a lot of funding into training and development of our personnel, so we haven't had a lot of major incidents. Our uh, insurance rating uh, runs uh, pretty low, pretty smooth. So um, we've met with the ICOPA creditors, um, and they came through and visited our facility. There's a lot of property room management side of that and uh, that's a big portion of the accreditation process. So they, we had to make the adjustments uh, structural wise on that, which was just minimal stuff with the way a tile ceiling was set up. Um, but we were able to complete some of those things and so we're partially through that process. Now it's just getting uh, basically the documents in order and the folders in order for them to stamp it and get the goes. Or are you saying that?
That's wonderful.
All right, thank you guys.
That will be the hot seat, not that chair. It's randomly going.
Good job.
Chris, do you want to come? Here, I guess. Let's get to Chris.
I'd like to also offer ride alongs with the IT people at any time. If anybody wants to go around and see blinky lights, we're always available. Um, as you read in my, in my monthly reports, we're working towards a middle mile uh, project. It's going to come straight through Valley County. Met with the folks from.